I have a call to order this board meeting of the Connecticut State Board of Education for March 1st, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. Call for 450 Columbus Boulevard in Hartford. It is now 9:31. I'm Karen DeVois-Walston and your chair. I'm happy to see so many people in attendance with us today. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Those that are able to stand. Pledge of Allegiance. Good to see board members, staff, and all members of the public who have joined us today. We do begin our meetings with public participation. I will be calling folks. I do just want to make note that this is a busy day. There are lots of things happening up the street. At the legislative building, there is a hearing on education happening as well. And our commissioner and some members may have to step out at one point to testify, but they will be joining, rejoining us as quickly as possible. Please don't take that as any offense if you see people needing to move during this, during reading. All right. We will begin with public participation. We'll call your names. When I call your name, I ask you to come to this table in front of you where the microphone is, and you should state your name for the record and present your testimony. We do ask that you keep your testimony to three minutes. I will signal you if you're going a bit beyond three minutes and ask you to raffle sheets with Anita or Sam Saunders.
Saunders.
Saunders, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anita Lee Ford. You heard my testimony on the hearing February 15th that cited two incidents that affected my children and students. The placement of a robo over the shoulder of one of my sons on picture day and the retake of the principal's otherwise other son in AP math classes. The subject became an accounting with private owner house coover. I'm here today to address a different issue. In the last two weeks, we've heard a lot of misinformation about the proposed Capital Prep Middletown. I'll start by comparing myth to truth. The first, the community did not know about the proposed Capital Prep Middletown. Myth. There were six in-person community meetings advertised on several social media shows, one virtual meeting on December 19th where local legislators were invited. People in the community did know. The fact that some decided not to attend was their decision alone. I'd like to say in kind of a manner for attending the hour-long session in December and presenting these eight to one of our very first community meetings. Second, seniors of public care on February 15th who were not in favor of creating school choice for Middletown were booed. It did not happen. No one that evening was booed, no matter what their position was. There were the gymnasiums, who were intelligent, talented, and yet very excited young people who showed support for the process of a sister school in Middletown, which children who may have been held below that expectation could thrive in the teens. That's why it's being booed. Three, renewing school choice for Middletown would take money from the school district. The money does not follow the student. It stays in the school district. If the money followed the student, Middletown would have lost millions of dollars over the years, more than the youth mouth train to destroy the location. The FDE requires applicants to show a strategic thought process when submitting these applications, and the CJF would only want to identify locations. It has been taken off the table, even though some people from Hartford who visit Middletown continue to raise this not issue for the sake of headlines. So, to board members of the State Board of Education, you hold Harvard schools to have rigorous standards that even the neighborhood school, but not elementary, that are the highest accountability standards for public schools in this state. Annual audit status of the faculty and written reports, they must meet academic, operational, financial, and governance requirements to operate for five years of time. You do a thorough job. Now I ask you to remember the work you do as the proofing result of the Capital Prep model and grant the charter today so that no committed school choice will have time to adequately prepare for the success of our children in Middletown. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. You must have timed that. You were perfectly at three minutes. And please correct me if I'm mispronouncing people's names as you come forward. Dorothea Enaga Stopoulos?
I'm David N. Stopoulos.
Thank you.
That's pretty good. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments to the State Board of Education at your March 1st board meeting. My name is Dorothea Enaga Stopoulos at the VX School of Education at the University of Connecticut. Today, I'm representing the AACTE Connecticut, an association of 13 public and private colleges and universities that provide educator preparation programs to students interested in educational profession. We promote and strongly support high-quality teaching and education in the state schools and are advocates for robust educational leadership. On behalf of the AACTE Connecticut, thank you to the Board of Education, Commissioner Russell Huppers, the Department of Education, and especially the individuals from the talent office with whom many of us from AACTE Connecticut work frequently. We want to thank you in particular for your efforts to secure the $2 million dollars of federal and state funding from the American Rescue Plan Act for the next two years to help cover various costs for our future education. These funds have already represented our teacher candidates, and it's assisted then by design cost for some of the fees associated with our program, such as those for fingerprinting and for the multiple certification exams they must take. We want to continue to work with you, the administration and policymakers, to identify long-term sources of funding and other initiatives to develop a high-quality teaching force for all students in state. Additionally, as the CSDE examines current regulations, including the use of STPA, we hope to work together with you to provide research-based insights and to ensure that the regulations support best practices and allow for the flexibility needed to ensure our state has the best and most capable teachers now and long into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I know one?
I have a couple of testimonies. I heard you say that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak, and I really appreciate the time that you take to consider each and every charter school, and it's a good fit for the community and for the state, for our students in Connecticut. My name is Jager Long. I am a Latino parent for the research educational equality proposal. In part, we go to charter schools and reduce resources to go to Middletown public schools that have the public accountability of other schools and will exacerbate any policies that are already stood in Middletown schools. I also urge you to note, because there are better models in the state of Connecticut to improve the performance of black Latino students. At eight, the majority of school districts in charter schools in the state of Connecticut has better performance for black students at Capital Prep Harbor District. If you take a look at the Smart Balance test this past year, the keynote at once, and assume that the NACSE expectations for language arts, I'm going to get to schools that have data, districts that have data, Capital Prep in CT3. Middletown is 59. Other school districts, I'm sorry, Middletown's 49. Other school districts by comparison, Maryland, New York City, 26, and the neighboring charter school, the student first, Bridgeport, is 16. So even other charter schools in the same community with the same students do a much better job than they do in terms of addressing the serious issues that we have with any qualities in achievement that face black and Latino students. There are better models in Middletown. I urge you to vote on this and encourage support for investigating and funding better models in Middletown, such as Maryland's Temple, even other charter schools in Bridgeport. Capital Prep also has issued higher suspension rates in Middletown and fewer ELS students, especially education students that are served among black students, they perform worse, equal to or worse than Middletown schools. And according to they highlighted as a successful score, if you follow them to the most to 11th grade recently, they perform no better in terms of on their 11th grade SAT end of year scores. If you compare high E students, Middletown performed equal to or better than Capital Prep students. There's also limited college career readiness, and overall, I would argue, raised questions with us in the data raised by Capital Prep because they're not consistent with the state data as well. I mean, it's not the numbers, students that go into higher education of 100% doesn't match the 70% numbers that are reflected in state data. There are plenty of other examples of these inconsistencies that are worth raising questions.
Can you interrupt for me?
By noise measures, Capital Prep has either average or below average performances in districts, and Middletown's black and Latino students are better. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Bishop William, Mr. President.
Good morning, Bishop James Borg. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share this story with you. I am Bishop William Kissing. I pastor in the group of Christians of the Church in Middletown for over 30 years. I also am the president of Middletown Baptist Alliance with full support of public in Middletown. I reside in Witten, Connecticut, because for many years I worked for the state of Connecticut for corrections and some of the Dean Awards that we took place tonight I worked with. And so then I'm here because I know that my children, if something does need to have a choice, my children certainly, I told you all, well done, you're well, but I recall one of my sons who was struggling at school, had he had a choice, put his mind to school, it was certainly fair, much better at school. And so, better than that, as children at school do have this choice, and we pray that when comes to Middletown to be able to attend the school, it will certainly be able to support them, to help them, and to give them opportunities that they can get present in the public school system. Reason, and one side does not fit at all. And so, I also observe and watch and listen to parents of children going to private Capital Prep schools and their excitement and their being there and the overall change in the students' attitude toward education and toward school. I said and I say that there is a directly from my perspective that having worked in prisons for 30 years between school and prison pipeline, Capital Prep schools absolutely defer to take away that children get an opportunity and again, a home. I would therefore ask that you please do not infantilize and allow them to this school to become a part of the Middletown system, because too often people of color have been told to wait for various reasons. Well, I believe that in that time, where we cannot allow children to enter them to the language in a system that they are feeling, and so, the answer to that is the question is, when is the time? The time is now. And I believe that as we allow the schools open to them, that it will affect not just those children, but also the effect the entire community of Middletown. So again, I would ask you, please do not delay, but allow this school to move forward so lives can be changed in a positive way. And I thank you for your time, Bishop.
Thank you. Bishop W. Van Kopp.
I agree with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., when he said our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter. To the Connecticut State Education Commissioner and to the entire board, my name is Bishop Benjamin Thomas Seaver. I'm a senior pastor of Shadow Missionary Baptist Church in Middletown, Connecticut. I've been a resident of Middletown for over 30 years, and Shadow Church has been in existence since 1951, that's 72 years. I'm standing with the support of Shadow Missionary Baptist Church in favor of the expansion of Capital Prep charter school model in Middletown, Connecticut. It is our belief that we should cultivate and support organizations that provide a pathway to success for our children. We owe it to our children to give them a real chance of succeeding and being successful, successful in life. And it is our belief that the Capital Prep charter school model will give our children that opportunity. And we also believe that we owe it to the parents to give them a choice in whether they want their children to attend school. On behalf of Shadow Church fans and the Capital Prep team, and I, I ask you, Commissioner, and your board, to please, please approve a Capital Prep charter school model in Middletown, Connecticut. When Capital Prep charter school opened in Hartford, some of us from Middletown drove our children to Hartford and underrobed them at school. I even drove to Hartford a few times to pick up my grandson from the school. But now God has blessed us with the full support with Dr. Seaver and the Capital Prep team in building a Capital Prep school model in Middletown, Connecticut. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Z. Jackson, a lifetime lifelong Middletown resident and also a proud parent of Capital Prep family. I have two strong voices to Hartford every day to go to the school. I hope you give the Capital Prep Middletown a chance to open so other kids have a chance. I believe that all students shouldn't, or all kids should have a school choice. Not every family can afford private schools and not all kids succeed at public schools when they are required to. And bless Capital Prep with the choice of my kids, as it that both my sons graduated from Capital Prep, it was the best decision. This is a school that can't stop its students, it helps them succeed. They were taken to colleges and teachers had coached them through sharp colleges on their path because they wanted to help the kids, not because they have to. My youngest son probably would have done well at public schools, but he would not have made that plan as a son. He would not have received her because Capital Prep helped him gain the confidence to be a positive woman. My oldest son would not have done well in a big public school. Capital Prep's smaller family environment allowed him to be seen by teachers and gained confidence needed to succeed. Thanks to Capital Prep, he not only went on to college, but he graduated with honors with a degree in engineering and a minor in mathematics. He now has a successful career, a credit winning, and is halfway through getting his master's in engineering and is also planning to get his MBA. I credit Capital Prep for their success. It's been negative comments about Capital Prep, including the last forum, Nina Peprat. Maybe it was, but it's hard not to get excited about growing up and such, and such a positive influence on so many kids. See, the current students speak and cheer on this school says a lot. And how many schools do you see where the students stand up and cheer for their principal because they want to, not because they have to? Someone said they feel this is an attempt to separate races, but I don't see that being this way. All are welcome at Capital Prep regardless of race. Everyone at this school becomes a family regardless of race. Someone said that no Middletown public school parent or Middletown resident were ever more support of Capital Prep and said, what does that show? But I saw many parents, Middletown parents speak out supporting Capital Prep, but these missing parents were also not deeply capital pressed. So what does that mean? They have no concern about this new school opening in Middletown? Someone says, that shows that more kids from, or percentage from Capital Prep than from Middletown public schools. Could that be because the percentage would be higher at a smaller school? Could also be that maybe bigger public schools, harsh problems under the rug, and maybe Capital Prep holds kids accountable and do not tolerate them. As I said before, I'm not here to discredit Middletown public schools, but one side is not at all. The truth will be allowed Capital Prep to open in Middletown because it's a choice that, the commitment to help with convenient public systems cannot be denied. With their social justice, I hope someday we will not have to check a box stating what race we are, we are all one race, we can be one race. Please give this school a chance to let our kids make a difference in this world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Winston and Morters?
My name is Winston Morters, resident of East Haven, Connecticut. I thank you guys for our opportunity to talk about Capital Prep this morning and addition, or possible addition of Capital Prep Middletown. Like I said, my name is Winston Morters. I'm current principal of Capital Prep Harbor Upper School in Bridgeport, Connecticut, and I'm also a graduate of Capital Prep Magnus School here in Hartford, Connecticut. I stand as a former illuminator, is what you call our teacher at Capital Prep, an advisor, and I'm going to coach a dean of academics, and that is because my family had a choice, specifically my mother. You know, in our family, religion, education, and family were the three pillars, and it was easy to get in church, it was easy to make sure that I took care of my family for school, was actually where my mother felt helpless. And so she fell from out of the lottery. I sat on that list for two years waiting and went to a neighborhood school where at times I felt I was overlooked, forgotten, and mishandled, you know, academically and behaviorally. When I was, you know, chosen for that list, I had been exposed to the only thing that Capital Prep, that being, you know, a scholastic place, I felt scholastic, where academics actually mattered and were competitive. I was in a state environment that didn't have metal detectors and security guards. You had exposure to college courses. I was, you know, asked to play to sports and become part of the team. I wore a uniform that helped keep it very simple for my family that was, you know, experienced poverty, had sustained, you know, identified community ill, and they completed a two-year research capsule project where they actually take action in our school community and greater communities to try to ultimately change the world. You know, Capital Prep is a social justice and charter school. It is really designed in, you know, scholars opportunity to go to a four-year college or a university and then ultimately know that they can change the world. And so, our graduation rate actually in 2021 and 22 was higher than Connecticut, Middletown, and Bridgeport at 92%. So, we're not only going to continue to graduate scholars, but we're going to also continue to instill the belief that they can change the world. There are other expectations that actually spell out, seek right, collaborate, problem solve, research, practice empathy, and then finally give children knowledge and stand on all the things that you learn at Capital Prep, and then ultimately go on to the world, to communities, people that look and make share the same experiences that I do and change the world. So, today, I ask that you do not delay your vote and that you please approve Capital Prep Middletown, as there are other scholars that look like these are experiences, I'm sure have the same, you know, sentiment of, they have the choice to choose Capital Prep compared to maybe their neighborhood school.
Jay or Jai Harrison?
My name is John Anderson. I'm a senior in Capital Prep. So basically, I would like to talk first about why you should build Middletown Capital Prep and project in Nashville. So first, I would like to talk about how originally I did Middletown Bridgeport. I was one of the reasons why I moved to Hartford and then moved to Bridgeport. Basically, Capital Prep, they gave me opportunity to have something better than our neighborhood schools, which are places like Harding, so on and so forth. I'd also like to talk about how the uniform is something that gives us unity. A lot of people, when you have a uniform, they don't have to worry about the struggle of paying for clothes, which is something that I had to do, go to work and pay for my clothes. A uniform makes it better. I did like to talk about the relationship that you have with teachers or illuminators at Capital Prep. My oldest school that I went to, it was a bigger school, it was very high. In this school, everybody knows your name. There's been times where I'll go into a class, there's a teacher that will say, I don't know how old you are, that I've never met before. Every teacher makes it their job to know who you are. So the relationship also goes outside of school work. They check up on you to make sure that you're eating. Every Wednesday, we have a group of colleagues, so they also make sure that you're doing your work and make sure that you're eating, that at home, you're okay. We also have a two-sport requirement. Nothing further sports. We have the day out party, they provide everything for you. If you need it, you ask and they provide it free. I'd also like to talk about more of the opportunities that Capital Prep offers. At Capital Prep, we take two college courses, one at Houston College Community College, and then we take another college course at Ole Miss University. These courses are all creditworthy, so you get a credit for a class that you take, which can then be transferred into college classes. They also offer AP classes, so when you graduate, you don't have to take that class to college, which makes college costs less for us. I'd also like to talk about how it's, the school is a social justice school. Our social justice project is how undergraduate students like the knowledge on how to define other role models and accept them into our lives. Capital Prep is an opportunity to be agents of change. So basically, you're practicing recorded practice, such as suspending students without work and watching their grades fall. We talk to them, we have to meet with whoever the conflict was with, we make a plan to go forward, and then we see them improve. Lastly, I would like to talk about how 100% of our students get accepted into colleges. Basically, what this means is it gives us the option, not saying that every student will go to college graduate, but we have an option in front of us, so that it's not hard for us. Every student also gets a college. That's it. But basically, I just wanted to say, thank you for hearing me out and to consider Capital Prep Middletown. Thank you.
I mean, I cut people off, but I especially hate to cut off the young people. Kyla, is it Gray?
Jeter.
Jeter?
Jeter.
Jeter.
Sorry.
My name is Heidi Jeter, and I'm a sophomore at Capital Prep Harbor. I'm here to tell you why Capital Prep changed my life. I've been in bridge work my entire life, but my mother never believed in an education system, so she had a curse. I didn't leave those schools until Capital Prep, lowers was created. My mom was first put out of our community because the education was so bad that she did not guarantee that I would be cut off from the school. So I spent my academic career in the very first school system, helping create a foundation that would ensure my success. But that's all it did. I never saw my child, I never got to see my teachers, and I was constantly the only five in my own class. So my mom took me to school at a school with a reputation for not failing students. And that really paid off. I stand before me today as a sophomore with a 4.2 GPA, state college class at Paul Shinn University. I started as a co-captain of my Na12 team, captain of my volleyball team, as deputy manager of the school, and this year, I've morphed into a leader. Not only have I benefited in success, I feel this personal success. My mom told me that I achieved that Capital Prep is immeasurable. And I'm here today hoping that those who are listening to my story will open their eyes and see how many other students' lives can be changed when Capital Prep Middletown is open. I'm here to show you that the difference is much bigger than either of us. As you should be learned, denying a school whose power is too great to turn away from, you will be responsible for forcing another one to choose between the quality of education you will be responsible for forcing another one to choose between the quality of education or a meaningful social life for the child. Understand, you have the power to change the lives of students, who will ultimately impact the communities as a whole. Act as your power to make decisions that will mean the future of children's lives. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you will love Capital Prep Middletown.
Okay, so my name is Scott, and it starts with a W. So please let us know.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Scott Wong Allen, and I am the executive director of curriculum and instruction for Capital Prepatory Schools, a founding member of Capital Prepatory Schools and have worked with the group before its first schools was opened. I've worked at Capital Prepory as a mathematics teacher, an advisor, a coach, an athletic director, academic team, a director of curriculum prior to my current role. I'm here today in support of Capital Prepatory Middletown. I urge the State Board of Education to vote today to approve the initial charter for the Capital Prepatory Middletown. As we have heard over the last several months in our town hall sessions in Middletown, on a weekly public Zoom meeting and in the February fifteenth public hearing, many of the Black and Latin family in Middletown demand another option. These families express frustration with the disparate treatment that their children have faced in the Middletown Public Schools. An achievement gap is defined as the disparity in academic achievement between minority and disadvantaged students and their white counterparts. Danger reveals that the achievement gap does exist due to the lack of rigorous and engaging educational opportunities offered to Middletown minority children. When one parent performs a state exam broken out by race during the 2021 Harvard Nowness Assessment Testing Cycle, Middletown proficiency rates for ELA amongst white students was fifty-seven percent. Their Black or African-American counterparts were less than half as likely to be provisioned at twenty-six percent, and the rate for Hispanic-Latino colleges was thirty-six percent. Thirty-sixth cycle of the test, thirty-six percent of white Middletown students demonstrate proficiency on the LSAT mathematics. The district mathematics proficiency rate amongst Black or African-American was a third of that at twelve percent. The Spanish-Latino college has a proficiency rate of nineteen percent. In fact, 2021 was no aberration. In every testing cycle since 2015, Middletown white students demonstrate proficiency on the LSAT and have a rate thirty points greater or more than their minority counterparts. In 2006, Lord Labs in the building defined educational debt as one owed by an education system for the cumulative effects of an opportunity gap and the harm it has done to students of color. Under this definition, Middletown owes their students of color a great educational debt. All colleges benefit from a quality of access as designed by Capital Prep schools, rigorous educational interference designed to prepare them for college. Middletown students of color should not have to pay to go to a private school to afford themselves the same college for a free program their white counterparts participate in, Middletown High School. The easiest way for Middletown to start paying this on their educational debt is to provide a charter for Capital Prepory Middletown. In doing so, this will instantly improve the likelihood of Middletown's students of color demonstrating proficiency on the SATs and others prior to high schools, provide access to rigorous public preparatory classes involved. Capital Prep's students of color will participate in at least one AP course and have access to public classes and increase the likelihood of participating in the college. The achievement gap is one of the greatest achievements in opportunity gaps between white and minority students within the nation. The Middletown Public Schools is a mirror by your process of this. Approve this charter today, and we will get to work tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deccaryana Carter?
Good morning. My name is Deccaryana Carter, and I am reapprousing word, hoping to serve as the Assistant Superintendent for Capital Prep Middletown and as a parent. I hope that my story will explain why this vote is so important to me and parents like me. As a first generation immigrant, I moved to the United States with nothing and lived in poverty for many years. So our fair quality education for our son was virtually impossible. Our neighborhood schools would have eaten him alive. They were underachieving, violent, and lacking academic opportunities. Next, we moved to the good school district with a better academic progress, with fewer community members who looked like us. Their son was underestimated, mistreated, and even while the N-word was issued, there was nothing was done about this. Capital Prep transformed our lives. I stand here, sitting here today, a dedicated senior administrator and a proud parent of a son who started Capital Prep in middle school with a five-year-four plan for his ADHD, who is now fifteen and about to graduate high school with a diploma and an associate's degree from Houston Community College. Preparing solid for Capital College is Capital Prep North Florida. The indicators in the state district profile for 2021-22 are clear. Capital Prep Harvard also forms Middletown, Bridgeport, and sometimes the entire state in sending Black children to four-year colleges. The percentage of Black students in a full secondary readiness benchmark are as follows. Bridgeport nineteen point four percent, Middletown fourteen point four percent, the state of Connecticut forty-three percent, and Capital Prep Harvard fifty-seven point six percent. Barriers do not define capacity at Capital Prep. In fact, every single Capital Prep Harvard senior has already been accepted to a four-year college. That's one hundred percent. Along with these college acceptances are combined salaries of one point four million. This continues our ancient year tradition, a milestone reached even though we accept scholars unlike the charter mentioned in other testimonies at all grade levels, improving self-race. Additionally, Capital Prep needs the certain Middletown because that is what the community wants. Throughout the past several months, the community has expressed their support. In December twenty-two, when we submitted our application, we gathered a hundred and sixty-two signatures and over thirty letters of support. And the letters of support and testimonies keep rolling in. The data and the means for this school cannot be ignored, the real data taken in contest. Please vote today in favor of Capital Prep Middletown and allow us to continue to change the world because we are Capital Prep. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Henry, and I'm a senior at Capital Prep. I'm here to request a favorable vote today for a new Capital Prep in Middletown, so are acting as a C Prep. I want to point out how Capital Prep has taught us through such a way in a variety of ways. Starting with me being able to, two years ahead of my original cohort, giving me the opportunity to graduate two years early, giving me the opportunity to start doing enrollment at Houston County Community College, which will lead us to me graduating with my associate's degree, and giving me not just at a young age, with a four-point-oh GPA and an associate's degree in criminal justice that made my family proud. Coming to think of it, I'm not the only person who graduated from Capital Prep in five-year-four and an associate's degree. Capital Prep is a place where the impossible is possible every day. Every single one of our students has an opportunity to go to college. Capital Prep definitely changed my life. I pray that more students and more communities have the opportunity to change their lives. And as a side note, I want to congratulate the seniors of Capital Prep Harvard and Capital Prep Harvard. A hundred percent of us have already been accepted to four-year colleges. In the future, Capital Prep Middletown will.
Rich Bgansy Jr.?
Good morning. I, unfortunately, have had to follow back the partner after she speaks, and now I get to have her son to the pile of people who speak better in public time. So I'm going to struggle with this, and I appreciate you taking this in advance. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Capital Prep Middletown. My name is Rich Bgansy. I am a part of the team that, part of that team that founded Capital Prep over there, street over there. It's kind of homecoming with the original Harvard School principal and currently the director of daily accountability for Capital Prep Harvard School. I'm reluctant to speak here today in one part because addressing large audiences is not personal strength of mind. But also because in order to advocate for the Middletown Capital Prep, I have to sound like I am critical of Middletown Public Schools, which I'm not. This is difficult because I'm a resident of Middletown and have a child. My son is in fourth grade, still in school. He's got lots of friends, and I like the principal, I like the teacher. And I don't think that anybody is black or you're not working hard. However, I've heard you today, statements from members of the public who oppose the school's term of endowment, and have been warned as a mischievous, misleading recording in Capital Prep's data. I encourage every decision maker to access the district profile and performance report for school year 2022. All the data that I'll go through today can be found there. And on the profiles of Capital Prep and Middletown, and what I share with you, there's the link at the bottom or the tail end. And so, I'm sorry, I misplaced that. At the last public hearing, two graduations raised at Capital Prep were shared for my third and our fourth year in existence, the evidence of Capital Prep being a poorly performed school. But what was shared by the Middletown board member was that since those earlier where we had a great culture where students have to complete a social justice project, which wasn't qualification or criteria for graduation in Bridgeport Public Schools, you've heard students here speak of it, even our current principal, who completed the project. Like that culture hadn't been developed yet, and so, yes, we had students in their senior year transfer back to their district school so they could graduate on high, as opposed to not being able to graduate and so the credits and prizes through the criteria of graduation in our school. But last year, we did have this graduation rate of eighty-two percent, while Middletown was at ninety-three point three percent. You know, clearly, Middletown did better there. But I think the comparison can be applied in the scene because Middletown is a suburban school this year. And when you compare the demographic majority, the same group of Middletown Blacks students, Capital Prep graduated at ninety-two point one percent, while Middletown was at eighty-nine percent. Seventy-three point two percent of Black graduated seniors attend college after graduation, and only sixty-one point five percent did the Middletown. And additionally, Capital Prep's overall district college's penny average was seventy-one point seven percent, which is higher than the state's average sixty-six twenty-one, and Middletown was slightly below that, sixty-six. And I think students were the only ones who did well. Elementary schools, elementary and middle school students of Capital Prep were success off of Black students at Capital Prep, outperforming Middletown in EDI, which is a measure representing the average performance of students on the state's summer assessment, in ELA, not in any other way.
Good to hear that.
Thank you for the time. You don't know how much I appreciate being over there. I'll close with this, that there is a, there is a accountability in that generation system. I would just briefly, because these are, this is from the state website, Peter Broad, twelve indicators that help tell the story how well this district school prepares its students for success in college for years to come. It goes beyond the test score and completing the act of success. This is the state complete managerial school performance. Last year, Capital Prep had a higher score in the history of the Middletown Public Schools. Please vote again.
Reverend Ray Gadsden?
I'd like to thank each member of the State Board of Education for the opportunity to speak this morning. As a member of the Middletown community motivated by righteous indignation, I am moved to social action and high pursuit of social change that would equate to social justice. My most important leadership role is as a Black mother of two Black children who are also rising members of this community, people and citizens of these what we call United States. It is for this reason that I speak from one heart today, praying to reach the heart of another. We stand deserving of equal human and civil rights. Within those rights is having an assurance that the state of Connecticut will ensure equity and excellence for all Connecticut students. Here we today. Currently, our Black and Brown students and families are being underserved in your mission. In short, our students are not valued, validated, nor viewed the same. Our students are not disciplined the same. Our students are not acknowledged the same. Our students are not encouraged the same. The opportunities that may be afforded our children are not disclosed nor promoted the same. For decades, our children have not been provided with the same direction and promise in securing higher education. Our children are not even spoken to the same. They are and have been the focus of microaggressive behaviors before the term was even coined. This is not an environment in due to the cultivation of equity nor excellence. It is for these reasons that I support, endorse, and advocate for the opening of a Capital Prepatory Charter School in the city of Middletown. We need a school compromise of a team that will partner with the parent, that understand and can relate to our children, that will prioritize the educational, social, and emotional needs of our children and handle them with care and concern. The city of Middletown needs a change, and that change will start from the top down. As there are parents, caregivers, educators, and churches in this community that lay awake some nights and pursue the solutions to the problems our children face daily, I pray that your heart too would be heavy with a weight of responsibility to respond appropriately to the call of change even in the face of adversity today. So then, to the state of Connecticut Board of Education, as you heard the data, you felt the emotion coming to the votes and heard the voices, we implore you for your favor in allowing us to add to the upbuilding of this community, the success of all of our children who are our future, and lastly, to aid in fulfilling your mission in ensuring equity and excellence for all Connecticut students. Thank you. And if you'll allow me, I'll be reading a testimony on behalf of my daughter. I didn't want to pull her out of school, did I? Is that okay?
Just to discuss what her name is. Just pour in a bit of chaperoning in my voice.
What is, what is her name? Her name is Fabrielle Garner.
Can you spell that?
S as in sense, A I, B as in voice, R Y, A L, Garner, G A R N E R.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Fabrielle Garner. I live in Middletown, Connecticut. I'm seventeen years old and a junior at Middletown High School. I've also been a high honor roll since my middle school year. I just want to thank the board members for letting me have this opportunity to share my experiences while in this school system. I have four experiences that I want to highlight and share with you this evening. My first experience was in fifth grade when my teacher threw orange field at me and thought it was a joke. This was an experience that made me feel relitised and that I wasn't being taken seriously. My second experience was in seventh grade as a member of the track team. I and a group of other students were all dismissed from the track team because of the action of one person, even though we didn't all participate in those actions. My mother had to come into school to speak on my behalf until they reinstated my admission on the track team because it was found they dismissed me and others without proper cause. This experience made me feel like when it came to us, the adults were just saying anything or finding people to blame it on. My third experience was during my sophomore year when I was in English honors and I needed help with an assignment. And at the time, I had a ninety-three, and my teacher took me off in the hallway and told me that I should go to a lower English class with less work if I needed help. My last experience was in eleventh grade this year when I left at the beginning of class to fix my Chromebook. Then I came back and twenty minutes later, I had to use the bathroom, so I received a pass from my parent. My teacher wasn't in the room, and I was waiting to the bathroom. My teacher wasn't in the room and on the way to the bathroom, I saw my teacher and he acknowledged that I was going to the bathroom. When I came back to class, I was marked absent. I asked why when he had just seen me and he replied with, "I don't know if you're enough to trust me yet. I don't know if you'll be back or not." And he asked would I come back, which I replied with, "Yes, I always come back." I felt it was rude based on this stereotypical experience that black students can't be trusted and they don't go to class. I think bringing Capital Prepatory Schools to the Middletown community would be a great idea and hope that no other black.
Diane Cotton?
Greetings to the Commissioner, Russell Tucker, and the State Board of Education. My name is Diane Cotton. I am the chairman of the Golden Conde and past Middletown student and the founder of a teaching nonprofit organization based in Middletown that works specifically with accurate students and justice advocates. I began in support of Capital Prep in Middletown. When my son was in elementary school within the Middletown School District, he was asked to write an essay on what makes him different. And it is as they stated in my book, our teachers are always picking on me. They think I'm a delinquent, a bad kid with nothing good going on in life. When they see that I'm in their class, they act mad because they think I'm a bad kid, but I'm not. If they would get to know me, they would know that I'm, that I'm chill and I'm funny and I love everyone. I do play around a lot, but I'm not bad. I'm just different. By the time my son did it to Middletown High School, the school system had already labeled him as a problem kid. And that's although he had never been to the standard or gotten into a fight by the tenth grade, I was told by an administrator that he was on their list. I was then called into a meeting and told they believe my son was doing drugs because he wasn't behaving in class. At the next meeting, they gave me the option of placing him in a special program for, for students or they made him repeat the grade. I instead requested he be tested for learning disability. The school prolonged the request, so I asked the pediatrician to wait to see if the process. At the end of the testing, we diagnosed with ADHD. He didn't have a behavioral issue. He just couldn't focus and that is what they considered and that is what he considered different. Yet even with this information, his teachers would not follow his ITC and said most of them claimed they didn't know he had, even had one. See, in all honesty, I just didn't matter to them because they saw him as a delinquent rather than a student with a learning disability. I won't even mention, or maybe I will, the fact that my daughter, just last year, sat in health class where her teacher asked her, "What does it feel like to be an N-er?" She was never terminated and that she was moved to an elementary school. I'm asking each of you to grant a charter for Capital Prep in Middletown today because a social like my son and daughter deserve to be seen, heard, and given a chance and a choice. I want our black and brown students to be seen as scholars, headed to college rather than delinquents headed to prison. I want the state teachers and administrators that look to give up the experience to play so far in college because he hates school. I believe he hated the system that he was holding. So I'm asking you on behalf of all the students who are just different, to vote yes to Capital Prep in Middletown today and give our Middletown students a choice and a chance. Thank you.
Hannah Holt, junior?
Pre-checkup, take my clock out. Good morning to the Connecticut Board of Education. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the approval of the Capital Prep in Middletown. Let me be forthright and tell you I've come as a Bridgeport resident for over fifty-one years. I'm strongly the treasurer and the chair of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Part of the success of the school and the presence of Dr. Perry and Ethan Hartford, I am the one that initiated his departure from this wonderful state capital. I attended Capital Prep in Hartford, saw what he was doing, and I told him and challenged him at our educational conference that if he was serious about helping and closing the achievement gap, and if he was the kid, then Hartford and the Magus School would love to do it. And I challenged him on his pedagogical approach. If it's real, do it in Bridgeport. I stand now a committed board member, founding member of Capital Prep, to tell you I have watched Dr. Perry, his team, and his staff create a brand new educational culture in the city of Bridgeport. He is the only school in the state of Connecticut where the graduates of his high school actually have associate degrees before they get their diploma. It was cute in Hartford, but now to see it happening in Bridgeport, the membership of my church has benefited exponentially from this school. He provides the socio-emotional needs that they need. He deals with the social justice needs. When we had an issue with the ELL numbers as a board member, we approached him and let him know as a charter manager, our concern with the ELL proficiency and the skill set. He did not take this as an opportunity as some other schools in the district that I won't list to push out those students. He then went to Puerto Rico, to the University of Puerto Rico, and began a partnership to recruit Hispanic and Latinos to come and teach at our school. He is not only committed to education, he is committed to the wellness of the full man and their parents. I have seen the way in which the commitment of his staff and the dedication of those that work at the school, both administrator, whether they are black, white, Hispanic, Latino, or Asian, have what we call buy-in. And what I would like to say, though, though, generally I presented earlier that I presented him with my email address, I want the data that he shared to show that the school is not performing because there's one thing that no one has discussed. He has the largest, I'll say this slowly, the largest employment of African-American and Hispanic male teachers in the entire state, which means there are peoples of color, both African-American and Latino, that are looking at men that are articulate, that are teaching education, that are responding to their social emotional needs. That is why you're looking at a student that stood before you with their Bible for IEP plan, letting you know you've graduated from Musa Tonic at fifteen on his way to Morehouse College. In closing, I will say to you thoroughly, he has far exceeded my request for him producing ground zero. Dr. Perry is the answer, and that's why Puffy Cone was brought on the hall. Thank you.
Lady of Rose Daniel?
Good evening, everyone on the State Board of Education and in her absence, Commissioner Russell Tucker. Thank you for your time and commitment in allowing us this space. I prepared a full copy of my statement that I hope you will take the time to read. I wasn't able to break that down and share that with you in a minute. So I pulled out a few points that I wanted to share today. My name is Selida Rose Daniel and I sit here today as a mother, a grandmother, resident of Middletown, and a public servant who advocates for educational equity, access, and opportunity. This pension was birthed mostly by the scars I endured at the hands of our educational system, but it wasn't just me. It was also my four children and the folk that they were connected to, children they were connected to. In twenty nineteen, I ran and won a seat on the Board of Education where I proudly served my community, even now as I sit here, Martha Hennings, the resulting sound echoed by my community supporting Capital Prep in Middletown. I stand asking you to vote yes today without delay for our family and the surrounding communities. Here's my why. Like this board, I believe equity is a mindset of equality and equality is the result. The key to unlocking the potential in every child is ensuring that he or she is embraced in a culture of happy expectation and learns from great teachers and great schools run by great leaders. This is a commitment that can be found in Capital Prep Schools eighteen years of existence. Middletown High is a suburban district, not urban, and we just have a student population of fifty-one percent minority enrollment. Yet, our black and brown students' performance continues to decline when compared to the communities surrounding communities and the state as a whole. When we assess the performance data, it is critical that we break this data down by subgroup and demographics so that we can tell the true story of our student outcomes here in the Middletown with a focus on disparity between black and brown students and their peers. On February fourteenth, our district board shares the raw data on our black and brown students in our district publicly. Our black and brown students are not succeeding in the one public school option that we have in our community, and that is problematic. C-Prep has a proven track record for eighteen years that they can save little and make much. They can save minority students, some who have been educated in some capacity by their home district, who are all behind in the performance area, and improve them by providing students with rigor, resources, and a belief that they can achieve. C-Prep turned that data when we heard young black boys and girls testify how C-Prep transformed their educational life. You were there. Middletown has a written theory of action that aims to close the achievement gap and the belief gap. Capital Prep model demonstrates for us what that would look like when theory becomes action. Capital Prep is a value add to Middletown and aligns with the SDEs by their plans. So in my closing, our team has exceeded every requirement set forth by the SDE to meet the requirements we have to this point. Meaning in communities, meaning with our state and local representatives, I'd like to put a plug in things Senator Matt Lester for showing up even when he was under the weather. We had publications and we met every timeline. Delaying this vote until April will compromise the funding for this plan and set our families back even further. So I ask you, please, vote today as the students are at the core of everything you do. I read this quote from Seth Mooney Feta Clark, a powerful world changer and advocate for education. I believe unconditionally in the ability of people to respond when they are told the truth. We need to be taught fire rather than to refer. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Abadi Aneth?
Good morning, my name is, my name is, I don't have anything to pass out to you, so I'm gonna pass you my heart. I didn't prepare anything, but I'm gonna speak from my heart. I name my husband, a father, and a grandfather, and I'm a community father, which means my heart is for truth. That as a community resident of Middletown, Connecticut, our kids need this. I have an organization called Change in Every, every year, the first day of school, I get the community members together. I have sat in the mayor's office, I have sat with the, um, the Board of Education as well, and have community members come out and meet here every year for the first day of school to celebrate our kids coming back to school and welcome every year. I got pushback for that from community members. They didn't want something positive to happen, but I was there to get positive where I saw there was negative. I'm asking for you as a board member that for this time, we need this. It's a opportunity and an option. Don't take away the opportunity or the option for these kids. They need it. I dressed up today because this is what the kids see. Seeing me in the community and speaking to our kids of what they need, I'm the voice for those kids. They need this. They want this. At that community meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we've seen children who came together and was happy to be a part of something so great. When they put on that blazer, they put on that blazer for pride. They were proud to be in that blazer. Middletown students need that. Our black and brown kids need it, and I don't want it to be about race. This shouldn't be my politics, though. It's about our, about our children. So today, make your yes, see your yes, please, because our Middletown students and the students in other towns that will be coming to this school need it. It's an opportunity and an option. That's all we're asking for, is an option, something for these kids to want and need and have pride in. And you have that power. In the agenda, I read the agenda really quick and I'm gonna close. Capital Prep checks every box of your promise on that agenda. Every box. It may not be perfect, but it's an option. And it's on your agenda. I didn't come prepared, but on that agenda, it checks every box of your promise as a board. Please give your yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Martinez? This will be my thing, because I have to go back to work after this.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Diana Martinez. I'm a Middletown Public School parent and I'm shopping here this morning. I should even walk away using the Pennsylvania Amendment Bill ten ninety-six, which is an act of automatic unchartered that you approve. Uh, I'm kind of aware that the state handles, uh, Capital Prep applications and Middletown has approved positive that education rights fiction not passed. As a public school parent, in the current scheme of the state's Department of Education's responsibility is to children and families. When someone texted me and noticed, "For a public hearing, I want to turn our application on, this is English only and tiny font in a paper, I don't read every day, with no information about the application, a website, or email to seek further information, some details about how this would affect our community," I started calling the school and the process. And as a faulty algorithm, started showing you the sponsored ads for school choice. That confirmed that all the minimum, no, how to use the internet, that the information you're going to be finished sharing with the public. It also confirmed that hands already have the charter, uh, Capital Prep choice in her court. We should not confirm this vote, we should not approve this vote, we should just vote no. And not just because of worrying some kind of getting standard, the Department of Education only gave Capital Prep about thirty-eight out of fifty-seven points. That's about sixty-six percent, which other schools don't, it can be, but barely. Not just because of the amount of misinformation campaign about their message from proposed locations, not just because they've got a charter for some of the children from out of city and state for a public hearing intended for our community, and not just because they called a formal improvement of term key possible location on their application, although that one should be enough. And I'm, um, as saying that as a, as a Middletown resident and not a Hartford visitor or a Hartford visitor. You should vote no because the Department of Education has not done a starve there. In fact, you should vote no on all the charges they consider state reflecting obligations of the state's process. When Middletown Public Schools wanted to sell the school vacation to our residents, when MTS wanted to submit an English school, they established a committee of our residents and her lawful opportunities for public input. But the state, however, gives a tiny case to表明 that an application has been submitted, such a case for this, for our two-hour public hearing, and two reasons between that and the goal that we changed the structure of our school funding and our kids' education for decades, to submit feedback. How does the other districters submit feedback on a nearly five-hundred-page application they cannot access, with such a case of public notice, with no objectional information about the potential impact on public schools, with the local Department of Education outreach or education about how charges are actually funded, with no requirements that are locally aware of education hopes local hearings, and with no data on the schools being offered to them by the very folks who are trusted with their charter, with their children's education? Parents should not be receiving charter information from the folks who are recording our public funding. That should be coming from you. Like Capital Prep, you should do better. Unlike them, it's a exclusive job to do better by our kids. Don't defer, don't vote yes, just vote no and work on your. Just prefer, don't vote yes, just vote no, and work on earning public trust by developing an equitable and transparent process. Thank you.
Thank you. John Marshall?
Buen dia, buen dia. I don't say that to show that I'm a positive guy. I say that to show that the students at the Edmonds Coalfield Preparatory Academy for Young Men will become the gold citizens. I'd like to first thank you all for such a thorough analysis of our proposal. That's objective number one, but number two, I'd like to humbly request that our application be approved as quickly as possible. I'd like to share a point of view. Some people here say that this is not about race, and I'd just like to say, I'm the two of five, brothers. Bold solutions like you, Edmonds Coalfield Preparatory Academy for Young Men are about a race to the top for all students. I'd like to share some statistics about maintaining the city in which I live. Between, we have about a twenty-three percent drop-off rate in our school system. Between years of twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, we had about a forty-three percent unemployment rate. I just saw a survey, a national survey of African-American boys that was trying to get why they are disengaged, and sixty-eight percent of them are disengaged because the education system failed to have that makes a connection between academic performance and their future wealth and future prospects. Our school will make that connection. Our school will differentiate, not just in what we've seen in our application, but will be differentiated in education and pedagogy. That we will infuse it to that school, because we plan to scour not just the nation, but the world, because we are familiar in our schools, America performed globally, worse than the schools in China and other places. But we will scour the world for success strategies that transform disengaged students to not just engaged students, but super old achievers. At the end of the day, we believe that we need to have the Edmonds Coalfield Preparatory Academy for Young Men, not just for its impact on our students, but we will be a resource for all school systems and all schools in Pagan, where the great ideas that we implement in rapid-fire status will be able to be shared, and we will not only be a shining star for education of young men and all young men.
Please begin to wrap up.
Certainly, but we will actually help the overall public school system in Pagan. I just would just like to say, thank you for listening, and also, thank you in advance for doing what our community wants, grace and peace and resilience. Blessings.
Thank you. Kianova?
I'm Kianova, and I'm here and given us the opportunity to speak. I grew up in Middletown, went to the Middletown Public Schools, and I was a school nurse at Middletown High for twenty years, and then at Baker High School for another ten years. I continue to some at Bead Middle School, Baker High School, and St. John Paul Elementary School in Middletown. So, I'm well aware of the needs that the public at all schools have in educating our students, and I understand the desire for our community of Middletown, our black community to want another option. Our children deserve more than they're getting. However, realistically, I'm really wondering how that, I don't believe that capital prep in Middletown at this time is the answer to the problems that we all are facing with educating our children. One thing, capital prep would provide only, it won't be able to help a small percentage. And being a school nurse in the school system, they are so, I think we deserve all our children deserve to have that education. And realistically, in this time, when there's a nursing, there's nursing shortages, there's teacher shortages, there's shortages with transportation, bus drivers, the best way to help our children is to help and work together for what already is, rather than just be spreading ourselves so thin, because we would only be able to help a few. I have heard and I understand, the community wants our children to have the choice, or we do have the choice. In Middletown, not only is there a public school, and you have a record testimony, some teachers have done horrible things, there's bad teachers, but there's also really good teachers. See, Perry graduated from Middletown High, and look at where he's at. So, there's a lot of good teachers at Middletown High. That is saying the teacher was bad and leaving under school, not the reason she didn't leave under school. Please begin right off, okay? There's choices. Baker High School was very honored, and made a lot of parents have, did get money so they can have scholarships. So, students can go to Baker, they can go to Mercy on scholarship, they can go to the final, and they can go to Capital Prep, which is twenty minutes off the road, which is a wonderful school, it's a school model that we want, that the Middletown community wants. I have grandchildren, I think it's a wonderful school, but I don't think we can devote our time to Middletown.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark Loomis?
Good morning, I'm Mark Loomis, taxpayer of Middletown, rich parent of children that have been through the Middletown Public Schools, still are in Middletown Public Schools, and one grandson who's attending Capital Prep in Middletown. So, the word railroad, or the verb needs to push through hastily or without due consideration. This process has been conducted in a way to limit the majority of stakeholders with regard to their awareness of the issue, their understanding of its potential impacts, and their willingness to process and express their concerns about it. This meeting does not change that, many Middletown taxpayers and parents can be here on Wednesday morning, obviously not for that. Middletown parents already have the choice to have their children attend the school that follows Dr. Perry's model. In that sense, a capital prep in Middletown is a solution to a problem that does not exist. Regardless of what you decide, the vast majority of Middletown students will continue to attend the Middletown Public Schools. Middletown schools need your support, they do not need to be burdened by added transportation costs or complications or saddles or reduction of funding because of the need to support a new school. A previous speaker invoked the name of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It would be a mistake if people were to perceive the approval of this charter as honoring Dr. King's legacy and rejection of it as dishonoring that legacy. Your decision must reflect the needs of all students who will be impacted by it.
Thank you. Jayden Lee Forte? Pardon? Okay, I'll come right back to you. Let's go to Kenny Perez.
Taxpayer, come on down.
Taxpayer? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Good morning, everyone. All right, so I'm gonna speak to you not only as a dean, but also a taxpayer, Middletown resident. I'm gonna start off with a James Bond quote or two from him, says, "The paradox of education is precisely this, that as one beginning to become conscious, one beginning to examine the society in which we are being educated." Then he goes on to say that the roots of education are bitter, but the fruit is sweet. The reason why I use those two quotes to introduce myself in this type of capital prep in Middletown coming to our community here in Middletown and doing great things for us is, I was fortunate enough to be a student here who went to the village that no longer exists, Snow School that has six buildings but now with a campus, which rolls into Middletown with its mountain apartment complex, and Wilson High School that combined with Middletown High and now we have a couple different state championships. The reason why I'm talking about those systemic decisions is because in the projects that I drive through right now with family living there, there's no playground, and there's no opportunity for our young people to just be young people. Same students that go to our public schools or angles that afford Xavier and Mercy. Capital Prep in Middletown would be a different experience, it would be a family experience, one that many of us in the projects experience, the ones that will be coming to Capital Prep in Middletown. And so, we're open to all, got a great opportunity to look at social injustice, which our young people will learn, they will look at the disparities that happen not only in Middletown, but also the state and the country, because that's what we do, we're researchers. Give Middletown residents the opportunity to be a researcher, a learner, an advocate for change. Vote for Capital Prep.
Thank you. A Jayden Lee Stern? Paul Andalucy? Can we vote for the other one?
Good morning. My name is Mackenzie Rortado, and I'm vice president of the State Vocational Federation of Teachers. I represent the teachers of Vinyl Technical High School in Middletown, Connecticut, and I'm here today requesting the State Board of Education vote no to capital prep charter school proposal. I have led a teacher for almost sixteen years and chose to become a state employee and work in the technical high school system, because I believe that teaching in public schools is an investment in our future, and teaching our future trade people is a direct investment into our state and local communities. Trade people tend to stay in our state and start businesses, pay taxes, and become active citizens locally. There's no better way to improve communities of color than educating and investing in children who want to stay in those communities. Vinyl Technical High School has been serving the community for over sixty years in the exact same building. Right now, Vinyl educates over five hundred students who will be our future carpenters, electricians, IT specialists, precision technicians, vets, first responders, and more. Just last week, electors both came to Vinyl to interview seniors and offer them jobs on the spot. Vinyl Tech offers quality education to any student in Middletown, in the Middletown area who's interested in pursuing a trade. If the State Board of Education wants to invest in a positive public education program, we welcome the investment. Our students deserve an up-to-date quality facility. Vinyl Tech is one of only five technical high schools in the state that has not been renovated or rebuilt. This is not for lack of trying. Time and again, it has been overlooked. There are many companies and organizations that want to partner with Vinyl Tech and need a community that reflects that feature. Public education funds should be spent on schools that serve all children. Capital Prep does not serve all children, and charter schools are not held accountable for serving all children. Public money should be spent on public schools. Middletown Public Schools and Connecticut Technical Schools do serve all children who come through our doors. We know our children need more and deserve more. When our children need more support, more facilities should be provided to the schools that exist in our communities now. The Middletown community does not need a fund that we doesn't need across new programs that do not support all children. This community does deserve an investment from the state and its children, and Vinyl Tech is here as it always has been, ready to serve Middletown's children.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Andalucy. I am president of the SBFT. I represent the twelve-hundred-and-fifty teachers in the VOTEC system, or CTEC now it's called. I call it VOTEC, because like, when I graduated from eighty-two, that's what it was. I'm here opposed to capital prep in the Middletown area, and it's, there's a number of issues, but one of them is really a numberous game. So, the state, six years back, was going to remodel Vinyl Tech to the tune of ninety million dollars. And in time, DAS and DEP, they now build state facilities differently. They do a study, they look at middle-aged, the school-age kids that are coming. And so, doing that was a transition time when they did it differently, that ninety million dollar remodel got taken off the table, because the Middletown area doesn't have the kids. And when I say Middletown area, Vinyl Tech draws from thirty sending towns out of Middletown, they do all the Middletown county, they go up towards Hartford as well. So, it was pulled off the table, they said they were going to a forty-million-dollar remodel, and then that was taken off the table. That was six years ago. Today, the VOTEC system could take in fifty-five-hundred kids every year. Of our seventeen congressional high schools, all of them have a waiting list, there's thirty-four-hundred spots, and there was fifty-six-hundred applications. Every single VOTEC school, CTEC, I'm sorry, every CTEC school has a waiting list, except Vinyl. There are not enough kids in that area. So, adding a school, not only Middletown, I speak of the thirty sending towns as well, the census isn't there to add a school. We're currently working to get Vinyl Tech remodeled, add an aerotech program from ninth to twelfth grade, to help crack in the Middletown area, and get that done. So, you know, they use taxpayer money to add a capital prep, or any school would actually hurt the existing schools we have. And I've heard a lot today about marginalized students, and I can tell you that capital prep services ten-point-seven percent of specialized students, and Vinyl Tech is almost forty percent kids with IEPs and Bible boards. So, I'm opposed to capital prep in the Middletown area, and I'm in support of supporting the schools we do have, and doing a study, you know, I would hope you would vote no, and then do a census study as well as the state did, or tap on that. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Any word, William?
Pat?
Pat?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alan Marshall?
See, as someone who values the importance of education to students in Connecticut, uh, and its role in shaping the future of our state, I urge you to support Capital Prep and its mission to provide academic excellence to all students. See, when I was a child, I had the unique opportunity and ability to speak and read at a level above what was considered to be normal for a five-year-old. My earliest memory was standing in front of a congregation of two-hundred members and preaching a three-point sermon from the Book of Zechariah. And yes, when it was time to graduate from kindergarten, class teacher, my, my teacher wanted me to retain me, citing that I could not read words as simple as "as" or "if." See, as a black child in Waterbury Public Schools, it took until third grade for a teacher to notice that this little African-American child was reading at an eighth-grade level. I want you to know that those were two years that were wasted and where I missed out on an education that could have advanced me in my studies. When I transitioned into ninth grade, my high school lost my transfers, and I was once again placed in a remedial class. And it wasn't until my tenth-grade year that a black woman named Dr. Karana Pierre began to mentor me. She would call me during lunch and she would teach me the biology lesson for the day and expect me to go back and teach it to a class which was filled with black and brown students who were deemed remedial, just like me. This caught the attention of administration in school, and I was moved out of those remedial classes. Once again, there are two more years that could have advanced me in my studies. However, I'm thankful that I had a teacher who looked like me notice me. My goal in speaking to you today is not to belabor any points that have already been said, it's simply to emphasize to you that for black and brown people that look like me in public academia, that the education system is not the same. When there's a proven success story in places like Capital Prep where students are graduating with associate degrees while having five and four plans and IEPs, I strongly urge you to support their endeavor to provide education to students in Middletown, Connecticut. When a young mother in my congregation asked a mentor, her son who was enrolled at Capital Prep, uh, just around ten years ago, I too had questions. Part of those questions were answered as I watched him grow into a young man, uh, that is graduating this year, starting his own business, and has been accepted into West Virginia State University. Capital Prep doesn't have a need for them to prove anything anymore. They're a lot worse, and it's just that simple. So, today, I strongly urge you, the State of Connecticut Board of Education, to support Capital Prep today. By investing in this outstanding school, you are investing in the future of our state and ensuring that all students have the opportunity to reach their fullest potential. I hope we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom Strangfellow?
Robert Morton?
Good morning. My name is Robert Morton, and I'm Chairman of the Capital Prep Harvard School in Bridgeport. And I can tell you, after having served on the board for more than five years, that every senior, every year since the school's inception, has graduated, and that every senior has been accepted by a college or a university. And some graduates have even graduated with associate degrees prior to their high school graduation. I'm repeating something, but they're, they need to be repeated. Dr. Perry and his staff have created a model, a culture, that needs to be imitated nationwide. Our mission is to provide historically disadvantaged students with the college and career readiness skills needed to become citizens for social justice. This model does something that other charter schools refuse to do, and that is backfilling. In that process, most of the students admitted are one or even two grades behind level. However, when they remain with Capital Prep, they reach grade level and end up graduating with acceptance into an institution of higher education, and most often with acceptance into more than one institution. This model is geared to those who are marginalized and who have been overlooked and given up on. In addition to an academic education, these children are educated in social justice, character building, and decision-making, things that do not get taught in a traditional educational institution. Some of them come back to become illuminators or teachers in our schools. You have no idea what impact this has on our students to see illuminators who are like them and who care about them, who developing them a sense of self-confidence and an understanding that with hard work and perseverance, you can achieve whatever you believe. Despite the State Board of Education's propensity to pour money into failing or underperforming public schools, Capital Prep has proven models that works for its students and can be demonstrated by the metrics when compared to the public schools throughout the state. So, I urge the State Board of Education to approve and fund Capital Prep Middletown because we do more with a lot less. What do I mean by that? I'm glad you asked. When we are given the same per pupil allocation that a public school student is given, it fails to take into consideration that the public schools have brick and mortar to work with, and charter schools have to use the same dollars to provide a facility in addition to educating the students. So, you can see, we do a lot more with a lot less. So, I urge you to vote yes to approve Capital Prep Middletown.
Thank you. Tom Strangfellow?
Good morning. I'm Tom Strangfellow, the manager of the visitor. Um, I'm gonna go through history, um, real quick before I get my regular comments. Um, Black History Month, and I wanted to recommend a book, uh, your, um, book, course on African-American, Latino history called Born in Blackness, came out, uh, two years ago from a Harvard friend, she used to work with New York Times and college professor from the university, was very good, uh, not just in slavery, but he did come from civilization. So, I highly recommend this for high school teachers. Another book, too, that deals with indigenous history, the murders of, um, wealthy indigenous tribe members, Paul, Philip F. Moon, and Mr. David Grant, the author, was interviewed by NPR, uh, five years ago in twenty-seventeen. So, it's an upcoming film, American, the, uh, Caprio, directed by Martin, who was saying he plays an FBI agent, some other of these, um, wealthy indigenous tribe members got their money in Oklahoma oil, and they were murdered one by one. So, it's a iteration of FBI and the young, uh, the Hoover. So, I highly recommend that. Uh, it's only nineteen, March of History Month, they didn't mention the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight battalion of, um, extermination in state, that's gonna be upcoming film probably in the new year. And, uh, following the Clinton, uh, which editors too, and some other, um, featured articles. Also, Connecticut explored, they talked about the ancient Pequot archaeological fields, I guess they're working along with University of, uh, Massachusetts in Boston, uh, funny artifacts going back into that, and, you know, they have, they have sites there for the Pequot wars, and it still exists beyond the casinos and, and the Conoco State, they made Connecticut for our history. Let's get into the comments. I know, um, we talked about charter schools, I'm gonna bring in a different perspective, voices you need to hear from, like, our, uh, people without children, as my self, um, who they have, you know, gay parents or, you know, immigrant parents, know that our voices do count, and whether it's in the way, I know we've heard about Capital Prep School and, and some voices against it, but I think it's an important school, but I know at some point it's gonna have to be a cap because how are we gonna get all these financial resources out of the, you know, same time? And you're right, inside, people always want the best, and I know like, these schools tend to be against each other. I attended an annual schools, and we did have a CTE, uh, presentation, asked money from our students, you know, uh, if they go on to college or not, if you can get a well-rounded education in, uh, different fields, they wouldn't become EMT, et cetera, and were very, uh, you know, uh, very good. And we have a polytechnic high school too, National Junior East Catholic High School, which is another competitor to one of the pride schools, two, one fact, like for our school system. So, we're at a turning point in our, in the education work, uh, work for us. If not, if I'm opposed by, uh, Zerran Simples, Governor of California, when it varies, all the courage to be free, and even against anything woke or diversity, and I only disagree with them, all women's history is important, and we're at a point where we respect each other, not both lies, some people say, and I'm like, even race, it's also a construct, but I'm not racist, I'm here in Connecticut, so no one should be ashamed of their identity or image, uh, gender identity or race, you know, respect each other in that, uh, we want education to work for all of us, you know.
Please, please, just relax.
All right, and, uh, for ways in that, uh, discrimination still exists, and how are we gonna work that no matter where we live? And, um, it goes with the work, role, action, as well as, so, it's not just about race, it's about ammunition blast, and we're right, and we're at that point now, uh, to, uh, we're sort of in the point, thank you.
Thank you. Doctor McCullough?
Good morning, members of the Connecticut State Board of Education. My name is Janice S. Stewart, and I am the founding executive director of Safe Up for Education. We are people safe, building power, to get our children the education they deserve. We are in Bridgeport, Hartford, and New Haven, and we believe that every child deserves the opportunity to graduate from college, take care of their family, and fulfill their growing potential. We build relationships, leaders, and power through civic engagement and community organizing. We're proud to represent the churches across the state, five-hundred members and six-thousand registered committed voters, and thousands of applicants in those churches as well. Today, first, I am here to ask you to approve the renewal of three fellow charter schools, Park City Charter School in Bridgeport, Connecticut, Brown City Charter School in Waterbury, and now the Monticore School in New Haven. Most importantly, we are here today to urge the board to approve schools today. I grew up in New Haven, born, raised, and currently live there. I am third generation in New Haven, and I watch my mom work seven days a week and two jobs to put me through private school. I eventually went to Yale University, and I like to tell people that my legacy to university wasn't because I had a rich uncle that contributed to the development, I have family members and still have family members who are workers at university, dining hall workers and historians. Little friends that I grew up and played with, we all have a dream, I just had the opportunity to fulfill mine. The sacrifices that my mom made shouldn't have happened to me, but we were also blessed and had the means to do it. I lived in New Haven because I wanted to send my daughter, who's almost two, to a public school there. But the reality is that I can choose to send her to whatever school I want to, and I'm gonna make the best decision for her. Unfortunately, far as many children still do not have that opportunity. My mom was born in nineteen fifty-one, school was legally, allegedly, suspended in nineteen fifty-four, she was integrating into a school in New Haven. Generations of my family have been impacted by the state's inability to provide equitable and stellar education for every kid. Not only to open up eight-two schools today would mean that she were once again shutting the door on about twelve-hundred kids across the state, in New Haven and in Middletown. It is important that you understand that we are living the hunger dreams out in the state. The state is hoarding resources.
Please, please give the microphone.
And if that is, their resources shut in a refrigerator, food, and you're watching them starving and telling them, "There's no food for them." We are hungry for justice today, and we ask you to not delay the votes and the votes to approve old schools today. Thank you.
Thank you. Darrell Goldson?
Good morning, Madam Chairlady and esteemed board members. My name is Darrell Goldson, and I'm here to support the proposed Edith Copley Academy for Young Men. I am a lifelong resident of New Haven, though I did leave to Technology to explore the world after I graduated from the school system and returned twenty years later to my hometown. I am currently a selected member of the New Haven Board of Education, if only chair of that board, in my seventh year of service. I am also a former member of the Royal Waltz. I joined the New Haven Board of Education because I hope to make a difference in a school system that served me well, but over some years have been in some decline and student activity outcomes. The declines are particularly due to boys, especially those who look like me. Though I am a member of the New Haven Board of Education, I also believe that one side does not fit all. Competition breeds excellence. There are some boys in the system who have demonstrated that our school system does not meet their needs and do require a different environment focused on their needs for positive growth. The idea that they will be in a setting that can provide them more focused attention, smaller classes, less distractions, and a curriculum that is centered around them seems to be a no-brainer. Additionally, I am impressed by the experience and educational and institutional hours of the leadership team, as well as the swell support they have generated in the community with the concept of the old school. I believe it shows the trust our residents have in the leadership of their children. Of course, there will be some in traditional school systems who feel that they want to continue the monopoly on education, and I do not fault them for that. But my response is that they do not have the vision needed to deal with a large, diverse, and multicultural system like New Haven. As I said earlier, one side does not fit all, and the statistics coming out of our urban areas back up the need to diversify our educational portfolio. In conclusion, the current academic declines our students are experiencing while in the current system and desire in communities to see a more focused environment for our young men, I strongly urge this committee to support the Edith Copley Preparatory Academy for Young Men currently on the agenda. I'll add one additional, uh, point, uh, I just read through the Rupert, Rupert for the stories of schools, and I noticed that although we had several letters, uh, from community leaders, um, supporting this, uh, academy, some of them were not signed, including mine. I hope that you will consider this testimony or the previous testimony I made as my signature on those letters. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
...a different perspective, voices you need to hear from. Like our, uh, people without children, you know, like, uh, self, um, who they have, you know, gay parents or, you know, immigrant parents know that our voices do count. And whether it's in the way, I know we heard about Capital Prep School and, and some voices against it, but I think it's an important school, but I know at some point it's gonna have to be a chat because how are you gonna get all these financial resources out of the, you know, same time? And you're right, when it comes to people, you want the best, and I know like the schools tend to be against each other. I attended an annual schools and we did have a CTE, a presentation, asked money by our students, you know, uh, if they go on to college or not, if you can get a well-rounded education in, uh, different fields, they're willing to become the E and T, et cetera. And we're very, uh, you know, uh, very good. And we have a polytechnic high school too, National Junior East Capital High School, which is another competitor to home and private schools, to one that's like our school system. So we're at a turning point in our, in the education work, uh, work for us. If not, if I'm a vote by, uh, Zeran Simpas, Governor of California, when it varies, all careers being free and even against anything woke or with diversity and only disagree with them, all everyone's history is important. And we're at a point where we respect each other, not both sides, some people say, and I'm like, you're raised in total construct, but I'm raised in Connecticut, so no one should be ashamed of their pride or image, uh, gender identity or race, you know, respect each other in that, uh, we want education to work for all of us, you know.
Please give your microphone.
All right. And, uh, for ways in that, uh, discrimination still exists and how are we gonna work that no matter where we live? And, um, it goes for the work role actually as well as, so it's not just about race, it's about ammunition blast and we're right then, we're at that point now, uh, to, uh, we're at a turning point. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McCullough? Janice Stewart?
Good morning, members of the Connecticut State Board of Education. My name is Janice Stewart and I am the founding executive director of Safe Up for Education. We are people safe, building power to get our children the education they deserve. We are in Bridgeport, Hartford, and New Haven, and we believe that every child deserves the opportunity to graduate from college, take care of their family, and fulfill their growing potential. We build relationships, leaders, and power through civic engagement and community organizing. We're proud to represent the churches across the state, five hundred members and six thousand registered committed voters, and thousands of applicants in those churches as well. Today, first, I am here to ask you to approve the renewal of three charter schools, Park City Charter School in Bridgeport, Connecticut, Broad City Charter School of Waterbury, and Elm City Montessori School in New Haven. Most importantly, we are here today to urge the board to approve schools today. I grew up in New Haven, born, raised, and currently live there. I am third generation in New Haven, and I watched my mom work seven days a week and two jobs to put me through private school. I eventually went to Yale University, and I like to tell people that my legacy to university wasn't because I had a rich uncle that contributed to the establishment. I have family members, and still have family members who are workers at university, dining hall workers and historians. Little friends that I grew up and played with, we all have a family dream, I just had the opportunity to fulfill mine. The sacrifices that my mom made shouldn't have happened to me, but we were also blessed and had the means to do it. I lived in New Haven because I wanted to send my daughter, who's almost two, to public school there. But the reality is that I can choose to send her to whatever school I want to, and I'm gonna make the best decision for her. Unfortunately, far as many children still do not have that opportunity. My mom was born in nineteen fifty-one, schools were legally, allegedly designated in nineteen fifty-four, she was integrating into a school in New Haven. Generations of my family have been impacted by the state's inability to provide equitable and stellar education for every kid. Not only to open up A two schools today would mean that she were once again shutting the door on about twelve hundred kids across the state, in New Haven, and in Middletown. It is important that you understand that we are living the hunger dreams out in this state. The state is courting resources.
Please give your microphone.
And in that this, their resources shut in a refrigerator, food, and you're watching them starving and telling them, "There's no food for them." We are hungry for justice today.
We are.
And we ask you to not delay the vote and the vote to approve all schools today. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Goldson?
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and esteemed board members. My name is Danielle Goldson, and I'm here to support the proposal, end this Cofield Academy with Young Men. I am a lifelong resident of New Haven, though I did leave to attend college and explore the world after I graduated from the school system and returned twenty years later to my hometown. I am currently a respected member of the New Haven Board of Education, to be on the chair of that board, in my seventh year of service. I am also a former member of the Awards. I joined the New Haven Board of Education because I hope to make a difference in a school system that served me well, but over some years have been in some decline and student activity outcomes. The declines are particularly due to boys, especially those who look like men. Though I am a member of the New Haven Board of Education, I also believe that one side does not fit all, competition breeds excellence. There are some boys in the system who have demonstrated that our school system does not meet their needs and do require a different environment focused on their needs, positive growth. The idea that they will be in a setting that can provide them more focused attention, smaller classes, less distractions, and a curriculum that is centered around them seems to be a no brainer. Additionally, I am impressed by the experience and educational and institutional hours of the leadership team, as well as the swell support they have generated in the community with the concept of the proposed school. I believe it shows the trust our residents have in the leadership of their children. Of course, it will be something traditional school system who feel that they want to continue the monopoly on education, and I do not fault them for that. But my response is that they do not have the vision needed to deal with a large, diverse, and multicultural system like New Haven. As I said earlier, one side does not fit all, and the statistics coming out of our urban areas back up the need to diversify our educational portfolio. In conclusion, the current academic declines our students are experiencing while in the current system, and desire in communities to see a more focused environment for our young men, I strongly urge this committee to support the end of the Cofield Preparatory Academy with Young Men currently on the agenda. I'll add one additional, uh, point, uh, I just read through the Rupert, Rupert for the stories of schools, and I noticed that although we had several letters, uh, from community leaders, um, supporting this, uh, academy, some were not signed, including mine. I hope that, uh, you will consider this testimony or the previous testimony I made as my signature on those letters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go back to Jada Lee Ortega.
You can pass her, she went back to school. You can pass her, thank you.
Uh, Rodney Williams?
Oh, good evening, um, my name is Rodney Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of, uh, New Haven, um, basically the New Haven, the Detroit area. It's a blessing to be here today, my birthday. And I need to give a guy's perspective of the lenses, my lenses is to my community, and I didn't take these also. These lenses, I'm gonna speak on behalf of my community. I feel like, um, ending Cofield School is, um, definitely needed in, um, New Haven, and I'm gonna tell you several reasons why, um. I'm gonna give you just the different things to think about. I look at our city, um, as far as, um, the food trees, and right now, uh, our food trees are earned, um, as the kids. And I took my glasses on because it's very rare that somebody can hear somebody cry or see somebody cry. And in our city, um, they act like they don't get kids crying or see them crying. And I mean, cry for them, juggling the scene. There needs to be some positive bias investment, um, in our city, and, um, you guys are capable of taking a plane and going to get some water and come looking to spy on them. That's what we need, um. I know there's a lot of people, um, that you guys are looking at, and you guys got a lot of data, um, the data is real and I said, and although we got a lot of schools, um, I'm number eleven of eighteen brothers and sisters. I got ten kids, I got seven grandkids, and it's great to God that, um, I'm one of them. And I went through schools, system, in, um, New Haven. I think the school system is needed because, um, we got a lot of males, and, and, um, black males and Hispanics, um, New Haven and, and they're still in the mobile area around the everyday, and they're ill. They're not getting taught by me, and our educational system is spiraling out of control. Many times we go sit in front of the board event, and in our town, um, I think it's very important we can come here, because sometimes you got, um, you know, they, they says, um, chain command you gotta go to, but I went to Mike, a lot of times it's about one to the top, and, um, it's about honorages that verify this information. Um, you guys know for a fact that, um, the school system in New Haven is failing, um, and I don't know what you can do to change that. The school is failing, but I do know what you can do to help some of the kids become an active user. Um, you look at all the environment and stuff, not the environment and stuff, the technology that's going on in New Haven, the bio testing and everything, and I appreciate the funding that's being given, but New Haven is a goldmine, but the educational system that we got here, it's not really helping educate kids for, for the future.
Please give your microphone.
Okay. So, um, I'd say this, um, please, um, our community needs, um, needs you to bring us some water, put on some spires, and help us to be true to our, thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Salife?
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Commissioner, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Ruben Salife, and I'm the executive director of Connecticut Charter School Association. We represent the nearly eleven thousand students that attend Connecticut twenty-one charter schools, and the ten thousand families, like many of the ones behind me, that we should have this responsibility in their community. I move for gold, and for written comments, my support of Park City Prep, Broad City Charter School, and Elm City Montessori, and the end of the Cofield Charter School in New Haven, I will submit that in writing so that I can use my time to talk about, about Capital Prep, Middletown. And because I can't imagine the other windows, so many of the speakers that you've heard from Middletown, and why they want a school, and why it's so important, and the impact that Capital Prep has had on families in my hometown of Bridgeport, Connecticut, I insist that we use my time to, to speak to the process. Uh, you are here to consider whether or not to delay the vote for Capital Prep, Middletown, and I want to talk to you about why that would be critically damaging to the opening of the school. First, I want to say that I want to start with my praise for Event Heisman Francis and her planning committee, who have been doing this for a long time enough, and I've seen the planning committee behave more diligently and follow every single rule of the process more, uh, faithfully than this group. This is the longest RFP process that I'm aware of in the twenty years that I've been doing this, it's a year. The rules were established a year ago by, by you, everybody knew them. This group not only followed that process, not only did they have the highest scoring application, not only did they have the largest turnout of the public hearing that I've ever seen, uh, but they also held at least three open houses. I attended one with more than eighty people, where they invited all members of the community and leadership. They then went and had individual meetings with elected officials and leaders across their community. And so they have done, they have followed the rules and done what was asked of them. And so the detriment to postponing this vote is not just a month. One, after you leave here, these folks, who by the way are volunteers, right? These are folks that have jobs and lives, who spent the last year volunteering of their time, have to go to the legislature to ask for funding for this school. And that process and that budget making is happening in procura right now, and to lose a month, anyone who's worked in that budget process, you know that losing a month critically impacts your ability to get into the budget, and if you don't get into this budget, you don't get the charter, so you can't do things like you had a building, or put out a, a lottery, or hire staff, and so you're creating a, a perpetual delay. Lastly, the, the, the only thing that this delay does really is reward those opponents of the school who have the political influence, not with this board, certainly not with this commission, but in the political environment that we work, to find a way to deny these folks what they have earned for, for a year. So you have the merits of the school in front of you, you have the public comment, you have the results of the public hearing. I urge you to act today and vote in favor of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo Freeman?
You had to go to work, yeah. You had to go to work.
Uh, Grayden Waltner?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. First, I want to give all honor and glory to God, for whom all blessings flow, and to whom all praises is due. My name is Grayden Waltner. I've lived in Middletown, and I'm a sitting councilman in the city of Middletown. As an African American, a youth supporter, parent, and community active individual, I am here to voice my support of the Capital Prep, Middletown Charter School. While Middletown is not considered a, quote, inner city, it is a healthy and diverse city that literally mirrors the diversity of this country overall. The mixture of urban and suburban communities, several cultures, willing to share and collaborate with one another via several youth-serving organizations, most notably the Odd Fellows Playoffs, a youth theater that performs and trains young people to be friends, respect friends, and share with many audiences the years performing productions that influence and address key life experiences our young people deal with in our community. A charter school, quote, "that creates opportunities for all students to realize and fulfill their social, academic, and civil responsibilities by developing skills necessary for students to become agents of social change," unquote, is a special gift to our future. I told Dr. Perry last time I saw him, that I wish he started this, these schools when my kids were in that K to twelve category, when I, and when I moved them to private schools and spent a lot of money. And one of the reasons that I moved my kids out of the public school that they were in, um, came from a big incident with my oldest daughter, who came home that her teacher gave her, um, when they finished the, the class, and she was upset because he gave her a mark that she, which was a C. And she said, "I can understand it, I do well in that class, I, I do always suck." Turns out, of course, my wife went out there, she jumped in, asked the teacher, "Why did you give my daughter this grade?" And the teacher responded, "She sits with these, this group of girls over here, and all they do during class is they have fun with my patients." And, and...
Please give your microphone.
Yes. And my wife said, "Really?" And she said, "My, my, my daughter doesn't..." Eventually, he, he just went back and did his thought process or whatever he could, and he realized she was not in that group, and he had marked her wrong. And that, and that was distraught for us to get our daughter out of that shit. Now, I thank you for considering my testimony, and I pray that we do the right thing for our today and our tomorrow, as our young people are watching and studying their role models, you and I. God bless you. Please vote in favor of moving this Capital Prep, Middletown Charter School forward.
Dean Jones?
Good afternoon, everybody, it's midday.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dean Jones, I am a Harvard resident, and, uh, know Dr. Perry for a long time, and if you know Dr. Perry, uh, there's no script, can you say, "Dean, tell you the truth." And, uh, my truth is, I'm gonna tell you about a story that occurred, nobody probably really knows about it, but I'm gonna have it. Um, there was a young person, when he was in Hartford, that's the principal of Capital Prep School, who, uh, parents lost housing, so they, and at that time, he was struggling also with his education. Um, so I met with Dr. Perry, talked to him, and, uh, he said, "Dean, let's see what we can do, let's, let's make it happen." This was probably at like, uh, five o'clock, um, in the evening, um, around eleven o'clock, the young man came to my house, I called Dr. Perry back, "Hey, young man is here with me now, um, maybe, um, make this happen," with this young guy. Dr. Perry left his house, uh, I would say right after the phone call got to me around twelve thirty A.M., um, in Hartford, leaving this house with, uh, a uniform, a blazer, cosmetics, then a box of tissues, things of this, of that nature. Then he had a long conversation, younger in my little room, and, uh, he was, the young man was kind of like blown away a little bit because he's like, "Why, why would the principal come and talk to me at twelve thirty in the morning at your house, Dean?" I said, "Because he believes in you, you are, believes in you, young people." Um, and I, I tell you that story to say that when Middletown gets this school, um, they're gonna get more than just a school, they're gonna get, um, a community of people that's dedicated, and with every great leader's following, and obviously you see the following. So I do attest to say that, uh, Middletown will have an opportunity of magnitude of great resource of education for Black and Brown children, and whoever attends the school. So if you guys stay to make the decision on pressing the yes line, so that we can get more rolling, I know that immediately, Dr. Perry and the team will be on going to make sure that this thing happens fast.
Thank you. LaToya Howard?
Good morning. My name is LaToya Howard, and I'm a parent of a fourth grade student at Elm City Montessori School. As a parent, my hope and prayer for my child has always been for her to find joy in learning, and for her education and the pursuit of knowledge to be her liberator. When you start with the food your child is in, you're not giving much of your child Sunday's cookies as a human, as a stranger. At Elm City Montessori School, the dedicated leadership teachers, that we call guides, and staff seek to be within community with their family. And for the past seven years, this school has been our village. I have watched my daughter be transformed as a human being with careful attention paid to what she learns, how she learns, and most importantly, how she feels when doing so. Through their first full work of building an anti-bias and anti-racist school, she sees herself in her schoolwork, and she is also able to see her peers through a lens of understanding and greater empathy. She has been empowered to find her voice and to use it to advocate for herself, and any one she feels is dis, is disappreciated. She continues to be nurtured and nurtured socially, emotionally, and academically at Elm City Montessori School. During her time within this community, I assume that she's become a better human being. The school is not just a place that I send my child every day, it's a conduit for those to seek to serve our community, the city of New Haven, and the state. I have been engaged within our community as a member of our school planning team, anti-bias and anti-racist collective, and a family teaching organization. I have always found that the spirit of partnerships with families has been present in conversations and reflected in the school's intention of decision-making. I found their response and approach to recent challenges, such as the COVID-19 pandemic, to be focused on ensuring that the physical and mental health of learners and their families were supported and prioritized. With this family, family-first approach, learning loss was mitigated. If you believe that the school has soul, the soul of Elm City Montessori School is honorable, right, and pure. The leadership of teachers, staff, and families are striving to be agents of change for our community and beyond. As a parent, I hope and request that the Connecticut State Board of Education please vote to renew this school's charter. There is much more important transformative work to be done, and I firmly believe that Elm City Montessori School will be on the forefront if they allow the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Elmo Day, Wapio?
Good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing today? Uh, I'm just here today to speak on behalf of Elm City Montessori as a parent. I think it's a very exciting and interesting program. Uh, they definitely encourage, uh, individual ventures, but also collaborative teamwork. They definitely encourage individual ventures, but also collaborative teamwork. They teach the students how to be active, contributive members inside of the classroom. What that looks like is that they set up their own snack, they help clean up. That's the duties, which is really great when it translates to the house. Another thing that they do is this social and emotional learning base. A restorative practice to what I recall when we were getting into one school is usually it was an automatic system. What I can really appreciate about this school is that they take the moment to find out why the students did it. Ask them if they know the impact of their words and actions. And then have them really reflect what they did. And instead of the students being labeled as, "He just could have had some issues" and/or, you know, "Of course he did that, of course he did that." There is a moment of reflection. And I get, I think that has a lot of my son, who's great to come home and say, "Hey, guess what happened today?" And just hearing that the kids are again, that they actually worked it out, spoke through the different misunderstandings. And my son decided, "Well, every day, I take a mug, you know, a story, and guess what happened today?" The other piece that I think helps this is the school's commitment to anti-bias and anti-racist work. Why is that important? Because I think all of that lies in us, whether we recognize it or not. And if our team is for our students to be better, then I think it only makes sense that we take all the tools to be better people, which in turn makes us better parents. And the commitment that this school has to create in space for providing childcare, to feed families that want to take advantage of this, really speaks volumes to the collaborative effort of building community. Because we're not just raising children to be better. I think it's the school's commitment and mission to raise the community as a whole in any shape of the game. And I think that's what really is exciting about this program. The fact that it's not just my students or my son becoming a better student, but the fact that I definitely see the improvement I have as a member of this school, the relationships that I have with parents, instead of just a high and low, "How's it going good?" It really treats the space of like, "Hey, how's your son doing with, you know, his sports team? How is, you know, that project going on?" And I think it's something that, it's not perfect, but the fact that this school is willing to create this change, the fact that parents are anxious and encourage that if there is an issue or there is any concern, to come forward and talk to the leadership. I think that's the most that's been, or I advocate, showing them the support of Elm City Montessori School today.
Thank you. Tashika Winborn?
Hi, good morning. Almost good afternoon, everyone. I'm here because I am for Capital Prep Middletown. I am for Capital Prep in Middletown because of this girl right here. She graduated from Capital Prep in Hartford last year. She graduated top three of her class. She got a full academic scholarship to University of Pennsylvania Ivy League school without Capital Prep. I don't believe that that would have happened. I'm getting emotional sitting here thinking about it. She is a very intelligent girl, but I believe that in public school, she would have been overlooked. She had trouble writing and stuff like that. And when she came to Capital Prep, she learned how to write research for dissertation. Yes, so without Capital Prep, she would not be in this world right now. I actually spoke to her last night and let her know that I was coming here to speak on her behalf, on Dr. Perry's behalf. She was excited. She wished she could be here to speak on her own. But she... But yes, I am for Capital Prep. I have two other daughters in public school right now, a five-year-old and a 15-year-old. They both struggle. My five-year-old is, I get calls every day from school, from her teacher, talking about keeping her back because she's not learning her... When one of the speakers was speaking, it spoke to me because my five-year-old has gotten calls from teachers saying that she's not getting her sight words correct, or she can't write full sentences like other kids in her class, and that she might have some type of learning disability. I have never gotten any special calls like that in preschool prior. She was falling on track in preschool, so this is very concerning to me. And I know that being in a smaller school with teachers that actually are going to take the time to work with her is what she needs. So I definitely am for Capital Prep in Middletown because our kids need that. And my child needs that. I don't want my child to fall behind because of what public school may and may not be offering center. Oh, that's it. I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me speak.
Joelle Murchison?
Good morning to the Commissioner and the Chairman and all of the members of the State Board of Education. My name is Joelle Murchison. I'm an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Consultant in the state as a faculty member of the University of Connecticut and the Executive Director of the Longline Prophet here in Hartford area. I'm here this morning because as an equity champion, a mother, and a professional in the state, I am appalled to hear the divisive commentary being afield to the notion of the rights of parents and children in Middletown. The definition of equity involves us recognizing that just because we all don't need the same thing, that others should not have access to them. The fear that has been denigrated by those in opposition has gone full display. Many of them are fully aware that the educational system since its creation has been a means for control. And those folks are clearly afraid of what can happen when the power of community is motivated to create their own destiny. That indeed is the opportunity that we stand in front of us for Capital Prep in Middletown. My question to us all is, if indeed the Middletown school system is functioning at its maximum potential, then what's the fear of offering an alternative to the system? Should not all break institution when shadows by change rise to the occasion? The path to introduction to Capital Prep in Middletown would cause all hope to rise. The concept that was here earlier that there are already choices for public college sectoral education in Middletown is ludicrous. Since the genesis, parents should have to find wage funding for their scholarships through bank, parochial, or private schools simply to have a fair and just education is absolutely unconscionable. I was a resident of Middletown for 19 years. I hold a faculty training education and policy and a master degree in education administration. I have committed to public education as a graduate myself of public schools in New York. Before I had my own children, when I moved to Middletown, I volunteered in school and repeatedly sent talented young people who had very little hope, who had no role models, who were professionals that demonstrated an impossibility beyond their own imagination. And most importantly, they had very little interest in going to college. So while my ex-husband and his entire family were graduates of Middletown Public School, we made a conscious decision to send our daughters to Capital Prep in Hartford as soon as the lower school opened. Our experience at Capital Prep in Hartford was stellar. Our daughters thrived in a community who saw them as individuals. They had teachers who loved them as their own, who celebrated them for who they were. My girls still have lifelong friendships with the Capital Prep. One of my daughters is a sophomore at Connecticut Idea Academy today. Capital Prep is clearly providing her preparation to be accepted there. And my oldest daughter is a sophomore at Morton State University. Those girls are the foundation that encouraged the assertive learning, that taught them about themselves, and encouraged their curiosity. They had, most importantly, the ability to learn from teachers who looked like them. It has simply amazed me that individuals who claim to be in favor of educational equity repeatedly discount the acceptance of Capital Prep.
Did you hear that? Sure.
It amazes me that we don't acknowledge that students who are resident up to eight years in a failing school system might not experience initial challenges as they transition to an environment that holds them for higher expectations. Let us look at long-term data. Capital Prep's 18-year history proves that with a long-term commitment in these young people, they will not only believe in themselves, but they will be changed the world. I attend this vote in the meeting with the state considering the purpose of Harvard Prep and felt it was important for me to be here today as I still consider Middletown my Connecticut home. Middletown is often forgotten, and the shadows of Haven, Hartford, and Bridgeport is easy to forget about, that small suburban town. But now the State Board has an opportunity to support this effort to bring equity to Middletown finally. My nieces and nephews are waiting. I wholeheartedly stand in support of Capital Prep Middletown. Capital Prep is family. This is the community, and we are Capital Prep.
Are there any other people wishing to give public comment? Seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Thank you all for your participation. These comments are added to the number of written comments that the board also was provided in advance of this meeting and that they've had an opportunity to take a look at tonight, today. All right, so with that, we will move, there's no business for executive session. So we'll move to item 4A on our agenda, considerations of minutes. The Chair wants to take a motion for the approval of the February 1st, 2023 State Board of Education meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any edits or corrections required?
Yes, Madam Chair. I was absent at the meeting last week because of rumors, but I'm recorded as voting.
All right, we will correct that. Thank you.
That's a spirit.
And I'm impressed.
And we missed, okay, so we'll correct that. Okay. Any other corrections? Seeing none, all of you favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are adopted. In the interest of time and respect for all the folks that are present, I'm going to go slightly out of order. You will get to hear a report from the Chair and the Commissioner. But I do want to move into the items that are pending before us. And for both the renewals and consideration of granting of initial certification, I'm going to call each item and ask that to come to the table. But also, in that presentation, either Commissioner or in that presentation, I'd like to provide an overview for the board of the process that is called out for the renewal and for initial certification so that board members have a clear understanding given the amount of public comment we've had around this. So item 7A is a motion on the renewal of the state charter for the Park City Prep Charter School in Bridgeport. The Chair wants to take a motion.
No motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Ms. Parisi, thank you for joining us. And if you have others from the school that are here that want to join the table, we certainly welcome that. And if you present and give that opportunity for the team from Park City, it'd be wonderful if you could just give an overview of the process the board, the State Department goes through on the renewal of the state charter.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner Russell Tucker, Board Chair Deloitte Walton, and board members. In your board packet for your consideration is the Park City Prep Charter renewal, which we today to support the recommendations Robert Kelly, our charter school program manager, and representing Park City Prep Charter School that is in the direction of rich strategy. The C F C E received the application for renewal on September 9th of 2022, at which time renewal team of C F C E staff was convened to conduct an onsite visit to observe the practices aligned with the C F C E charter school performance standards as outlined on page 1 in the packet. The C F C E posted written comments on the renewal from the superintendent of Bridgeport as well as from the U S of Bordering Districts, which include Fairfield, Stratford, and Tumble. A company sharing was held in the city of Bridgeport on November 8th, 2022, where over 150 seats were attended. Nineteen attendees voted in favor of the renewal. No one spoke in opposition. In summary, the C F C E recommends that the state board that is being renewed charter for a period of five years. And if I may, I'd like to invite Executive Director Ravi Chiaro to highlight and once this renewal goes on to our state.
Thanks, Ravi. Commissioner Russell Tucker, members of the board. Thanks for this opportunity to speak here. I am hopeful and confident that the board will see fit to accept the recommendation department to renew the charter of Park City Prep for another five years. We're very proud of what we accomplished and excited about the prospect of having the next five years to build on those successes, make further improvements, and continue to grow and improve. You have the data in front of you. And I'm not going to spend the time reading that to you, but I think it speaks for itself. We received, from the board, we received commendations in regard to every indicator of the school's performance. At that same time, we were recognized, that we were recognized for many things we've done so well. There were some recommendations that were made. And I'd like to, as a matter of record, that we've already taken action on those recommendations. We've implemented, and everything is in effect, it is coming. We're grateful to the Connecticut State Department of Education for recognizing the positive difference that we made in closing and that it's achieving that. With your blessing, we're determined to continue that body of work. At this point, I just wanted to invite you to ask any questions you may have.
Thank you for being with us. Board members, are there questions? Seeing none. Feel badly that you will have to wait all this time for such a quick... Slowly you a little bit. Seeing no questions, all of you favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and continue on. Board members, our next item is item 7B. Considering the renewal of the state charter for Brack City Charter School in Waterbury. I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Important, in front of you, you have another recommendation for a five-year renewal?
So yeah, I have a broken record. But for your consideration in your packet is is the Brack City Charter for Waterbury renewal. Again, joined by Robert Kelly and Sydney, the Executive Director, Dr. Paul D'Arcio, and Chief Operating Officer, Manfred Yellin. The C F C E received an application for renewal on September 9th, 2022, and at which time convened a team to conduct the onsite visit to observe the practices aligned to our state charter performance standards. A renewal site visit was invented on October 25th, 2022 to observe collective evidence of the practices in place aligned to the charter performance standards. The site findings in areas of growth... The site findings in areas of growth can be found on pages three and four of your documents. The C F C E solicited written comments on the renewal of the superintendent of Waterbury from the school, as from the U S of Waterbury, wishing to touch on Middlebury, Middletown, Tullis, Tappus, and Common Lynn, Waterbury, and Waterbury. A public hearing was held in the city of Waterbury on November third, twenty twenty-two, where over one hundred and fifty people attended. Thirty-four attendees voted in favor of the renewal, no one spoke in opposition. So, in summary, Brad City Charter School is providing students with a chance to achieve a positive option, therefore, the C F C E recommends that the State Board of Education renew this school charter for a period of four years, with a commission to submit a direct action plan to improve student achievement. And if I may, at the same time, I would like to invite Executive Director Dureo to share a few highlights of what this renewal will entail at Brad City Charter.
Miss Chair, members of the board and of the Department of Education, it is a real honor to come before you today as we approach the ten-year anniversary of our original charter. So much has happened in the five years since our first renewal. We are now fully integrated through grade eight school, and we have graduated two classes of eighth graders. During those years, we weathered a pandemic which proved to be a great instructor of our community, as it has been for some many, most particular in the Bay Harbor and School. A C C S experienced a significant earning loss during COVID, despite its intense efforts to mitigate the effect of COVID on student learning. Unfortunately, COVID has thoroughly accentuated the gap between students in poverty and low-poverty and high-poverty schools. Waterbury has had one of the highest infection rates in the state. We struggled at times when half our student population chose to leave home, when we were regularly closing classrooms, rooms, and when staff themselves were teaching remotely. We are working strategically to overcome the gap, and witnessed growth in our community by the end of last year. As we review the past five years, we believe that our focus on social-emotional learning has been a real strength of our program. As we said in our original charter, academic skills alone will not ensure success. We have developed and deployed to act as emotional scientists, and that we strive to understand youth behavior more than to appeal to their foundations with positive culture that enhance academic performance. The approach includes distorted practices that help improve communities and the quality of student life. Over the past two years, we have also embraced G E I initiatives within implicit and explicit biases that can affect our pedagogy, grading, and culture. In addition, we have opened a health center on site, which includes mental health clinicians, which has proven very helpful in addressing the mental health needs of our students. We are proud of the communities that we have built and that we continue to develop. This spring, we will graduate from eighth grade our first pre-K class. We are confident that they will be the skills necessary to, as our mission states, grow academically and develop as people or characters who will be meaningful and productive, live to contribute to their communities. An area of growth that we currently focus on is learning. For several years, we have been using the use of positive and rebound literacy approach to reading instruction. A few years ago, we met with our teachers to ask for their assessment of our own reading program. Teachers across the board said that we needed more phonics and more explicit reading instruction. At that time, we decided to move away from the rebound literacy approach. The recent focus on the science of reading has reaffirmed that decision. We are currently inviting teachers to participate in professional development in the science of reading and begun using digital as an assessment tool to inform instruction into assess student progress in the acquisition of literacy skills. We are optimistic that change will be in the future. From our inception, we have offered a summer program for our students to address the issue of summer's lives. The renovation project is in progress, and summer's next first year is a facility, and COVID has made that challenging. We plan to provide a robust summer program this year, subsequent to summer, that means to enable accelerated academic learning. It has truly been an honor to have a mentor who is opening and growing a school in one area. Waterbury has been my hometown so much of my life, and it exists to be good to rejoice and that points to the city. I see clarity in my meaning when I say that we are humbled by the trust our families have put in us from the beginning. We take that trust very seriously, and have always tried our best, as we've blessed in our mission, to provide a reverse academic and social-emotional learning platform that eliminates the achievement gap for under-reached students. While we are proud of some of our related academic programs and outcomes, we now face the ongoing task of making up the learning loss that has occurred as a result of the pandemic, knowing that we have to continue this with the achievement area where we find ourselves falling short, in order to, in self-reflection, there is set challenge to continue improvement. We believe that we are on the right track, and we'll get you through this, board.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Board members, you have heard the recommendation of the State Department of Education to grant a renewal for four years for the Brad City Charter. Other questions? Seeing none, all of you favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, we look forward to hearing what you do, and we'll speak to you. Moving to item seven C. Item in front of you for the renewal of the state charter for the Elm City Montessori School from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you.
Once again, in your packet, for your consideration, it is the Elm City Montessori renewal. I am joined by Robert Kelly, my last as our Charter School Program Manager, and representing Elm City Montessori, and Executive Director Alina Holby, Principal Julia Webb, and Elm City Montessori Board Chair Michael Menn. The C F C E received the application for renewal on September ninth, twenty twenty-two, at which time convened the team to conduct an onsite visit that implies all practices aligned to the state charter performance standards. Initially, as required by the Connecticut General Statute, head of the C F C E, the new Minister for Education and New York Education, held a public hearing, surveyed teachers as they are considered to be legitimate, and then filed a public session on the new state application. The New York Department of Education notified the C F C E of its approval on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The renewal cycle is most invested on the number of reserves of twenty twenty-two to verify the presence of evidence of practices in place aligned to our state charter performance standards, site findings in areas of growth can be found on pages three and four of your documents. And in summary, Elm City Montessori Board is providing students and families with a viable public school change option, therefore, the C F C E recommends that the State Board of Education renew this school charter for a period of four years, with a commission to begin direct action plan to improve student achievement. And if I may, at the same time, I'd like to ask Executive Director Holby to share some highlights of what this renewal will entail at Elm City Montessori.
Hi, thank you for your time. I represent the board and myself as a former teacher. I want you to know that we're very, very proud of what we've been able to accomplish over the years, in particular, the last few years. And I wanted you to know that our school emphasizes the development of students, in students, a strong sense of agency and responsibility for their own life. This is what actually attracted me to the board, and part of Montessori education. And that in turn engenders a level of learning that carries through and is critical for them succeeding throughout their lives, especially in the economy that we now live. This, and then the very, very intentional community that's been developed by parents, students, staff, the administration, has created a sense of belonging that is, I think, foundational to the academic performance of our kids, and it leaves us enthusiastic about what their future progress and success will be, and what the progress and success of the school will be. So, thank you, and here's Aliza Holby.
As you're aware, Elm City Montessori is a unique local charter model, working in close partnerships with new even public schools. And we've grown eight years since our launch in twenty fourteen, and are excited to be graduating our first class of eighth graders this year. We appreciate the opportunity to take a minute to highlight some of our strengths, as well as our areas of growth. And in addition to our focused efforts on student academic and social-emotional learning, which our Principal Julia will speak to in a moment, we're proud of our meaningful partnership with our families and community. E C M S is one of the most grateful schools in New Haven, and our intentional work with families has helped us maintain high levels of engagement through the pandemic, and attract hundreds of new student applications each year. We've expanded our anti-bias and anti-racist work with student staff and families, as we mentioned earlier, from some of our families. And this includes launching our Montessori and Ch color Pathway Program. And through this program, we've invested in training, certifying, and supporting our classroom assistance, and as a result, all sides, our new certified teachers this year are educated and colored. Ultimately, our family partnerships and anti-bias and anti-racist work has positively affected our student academic growth and our social-emotional learning, which our principal will now take a moment.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Page, to share something in their company of schools. One of the things we're most excited about is that we took time to really intentionally plan and prepare and work with our instructors and teachers, and we saw actual academic growth during the pandemic, from our course in two thousand nineteen to two thousand now, when that, when many, many schools constantly were with them. When we first entered here for our renewal, we talked about the need to improve the student construction, and we're really pleased that now our E L A and science scores are at or above the T H A T scores. We outperformed our host district and the local charter schools in our area on our primary and film performance this year. One of the reasons this has been so powerful is that during the pandemic, we really focused on providing strong engagement work, rather than advancing our Montessori model in addition to anti-bias education, we really deeply invested in that, invested in support for our families, and we invested in strong learning, we implemented structured literacy, based on fine reading during the pandemic, to ensure that we did the strong work with our kindergarten, first and second graders, to actually make sure there's psychological learning and bonding construction. We also take time to think about our anti-bias and anti-racist work lived in the practice of our teachers. We've invested in funding and support for culturally responsible practices, both learning for adults, and then accountability in terms of thinking about our data and next steps for improving our learners. We do want to continue to grow, we're committed to our continued growth, and there's lots of areas to continue to grow. Our biggest focus is continuing to improve our academic achievement, specifically focusing on our high need groups. We want to make sure that all of our students are less than this, indigenous students are really thriving in our school. And we're doing that through a few ways. One is we've really invested in, we continue to invest in training our teachers to be culturally responsible practitioners, to really think about not just what they're teaching, but how they're teaching, how they're forming learning partnerships and relationships, and how they're building academic science depth in their classrooms, that's what we do in school. Not only exciting to be their friends, to be part of our community, really engaging, excited, and understanding themselves as successful learners. And the others, continue to work on our literacy work through our structured literacy practices, and a key focus that we started this year with our work in maximum game problem solving. We know that that work is foundational and also really exciting for students, and we want to make sure to continue to do that. And just as a parent and leader in these schools, we're just honored to work, and it's wonderful, turning the media. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being here. The board members, we have heard about the renewal of the state charter for a period of four years for Elm City Montessori, other questions? Yes, Mr. Page.
Good afternoon. I have a comment and a question. My comment is, especially to you, Aliza, I want to just commend you with congratulations on where Elm City Montessori is now. I remember vividly this being an idea, and you and I sitting and talking about the idea of manifesting a school, a Montessori school, and local charter. So, to see where it is now, to sit in this seat where I am to see and look at what has been done, is just absolutely incredible, so congratulations. My question probably is to you, Ms. Webb. You know, I love the intentionality around anti-bias, anti-racist sentiment. I don't know how effective that is with young people, but I wonder, do you, are you intentional about that with the parents? Because I think those are people who need it.
Yeah, we all need it, right?
Yeah.
Well, I will say, anti-bias and anti-racist work is actually, our foundation is from the N I A C standards, the National Association of Educated Young Childs. So, the work we do is based in developmental concepts, starting in pre-k. And I totally agree, we have a new board director, Shadi John-Jack, who's wonderful, and a big core component of her work is to create spaces for families to engage in work. So, we have a N I A R collective for families coming together each month, they share their own stories, they work on their own identity work, we talk as a community, and then we have, and so has a monthly gathering, and then also workshops that we host for families. We're hosting a workshop series through grants that we, we, that's focused on understanding L C C U I A identity, and how families can understand what their children might be talking about, thinking about how support them as they experience their journey as they grow up. So, certainly, it's important for families, and we want to continue to build. It was hard for you, because we all lost some of the message we've built anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to add, our work really came out of, beginning with an effort from families to think about how we're doing this work for the school. So, they remain...
Thank you.
Ms. Page, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I keep looking at this, and I must be reading something incorrectly, but on page four, in the areas of continued growth, it says, "The school's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two mathematics academic growth, all students is below the host district." And then, in the conclusion, you say, "Compared to the statewide decline in student achievement proficiency rates, Elm City's Montessori rates, proficiency rates increased. The twenty twenty-one, twenty-two E L A performance index, all students and high needs students exceeded the host district in state. And the mathematics index and performance were above the host district and near the state." What am I missing?
I think the word you're missing is growth. One is, one is showing...
So, it's national performance rate versus rate of growth?
Right, there's two, there's two, they have to compare.
Okay.
Growth was not as strong as student achievement, all sues and high needs and E L A math.
Okay, so the growth wasn't as much, but the absolute performance is better than you say.
Better or near, and the E L A math, yes. Nineteen twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two.
I thought twenty, it's been increased.
I hear you. Twenty nineteen, twenty, I'm just, I'm using the last two.
We're all right.
Yeah, which is, which was uncharacteristic, you know, the state argues were a deep cost.
Thank you. Any other questions? Favor of the renewal of the charter for a period of four years for Elm City Montessori? Please do so by five ayes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then next, too, I'm going to ask for an overview of that process for the granting of an initial certificate, so we're all on page nine, so we've got item seven D. Before you, with consideration for the granting of the initial certificate for a state charter to Edmunds Colefield Preparatory Academy for Young Men located in New Haven. Is there a motion? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. All right, that team can come forth as well.
Thank you. So in your package, is the consideration, is the Edmonds Colfield Preparatory School for Young Men?
Go ahead.
Okay, I already said, so again, for your consideration, is the Edmonds Colfield Preparatory School for Young Men application for an initial certification for state charter? With me today, my colleagues, the C E Education Consultant Charter School Liaison, Lisa Candy, and Reverend Dr. Lloyd DeKinger, board members Dr. Leroy Williams and Larry Conway. First of the background, on March 6th, 2022, in accordance with the statutory process for establishing state charter schools, the Connecticut State Department of Education released a request for proposal. The application for Edmonds Colfield Preparatory School for Young Men is a public state charter school to locate the new names and address when received on December 1st, March 22nd. An R F P review team composed of C S D managers, appointed by the Department of Education with expertise in curriculum, instruction, academic, special education, finance, performance, and others, reviewed the application for it. As noted on page three in your document, Edmonds Colfield Preparatory School for Young Men scored a 37.55 points out of the total possible 27 points. A summary rating indicates the applicant meets expectations to operate a successful school charter. Edmonds Colfield Prep's targeted instructional program is designed to intentionally develop young male students on that call. Edmonds Colfield is E C Prep's headquarters. E C Prep's goal is to actively focus on male developmental benchmarks to foster healthy young men who value purposeful, societal engagement. E C Prep proposes a structure of the house system adopted from the Ron Clark Academy model. This structure is full of school-wide techniques to motivate young students to excel, whether they're in the classroom, outside of the school, in their community, individual, or within a house space. Teachers are assigned house mentors monitoring this house system that will allow students to create their own pure culture of growth and service, conflict management, mentoring, tutoring, and peer acceptance. E C Prep proposes to open in grade five and with a plan to increase to grade eight. On February 9th, 2023, the C S D held a public hearing in the city of New Haven, the district in which the proposed charter schools do locate them. Over 55 people attended the public hearing, with 24 individuals, including peers, students, educators, nonprofit leaders, elected officials, and community representatives. They offered testimony supporting the charter school's application, while a thorough discussion of the proposed charter school. So in summary, we recommend the state board of education consider this application and write initial certificate of approval for the state charter to Edmonds Colfield Preparatory Academy for Young Men. And if any, at the time of the election, where we were relatively secure to through the conference.
Thank you very much to, actually, Dr. Walton, to our commissioner, to the board. We're delighted to be in front of you on this afternoon. Dr. Edmonds and Dr. Colfield were mentors of mine. Dr. Edmonds pastored at Dixwell congregation of church over 35 years, and Dr. Colfield pastored at Evangel Baptist Church over 32 years. Both of them were members of the New Haven Board of Education at different times. They were also civil rights leaders. Dr. Edmonds came from Texas, Austin, Texas, and he taught at Bennett College in Greensboro, North Carolina, where he had the city in at Woolworth Store back in the 60s. Dr. Colfield came from Enfield, North Carolina, where he was a part of the civil rights movement also before coming to New Haven. As I said, they were mentors. I grew up in a little small town in Alabama called Phoenix City, Alabama. And I understand the civil rights movement that way here. I grew up under George Wallace. Many of you probably have read books about him, have heard his name. My big mama raised me, and she instilled in me that I needed education. And from that, I was able to particulate at four colleges and universities. H B C U, Johnson C Smith University, Charlotte, North Carolina, Hartford Seminary here, Hartford, Yale University, and United Field Lateral Seminary. I am not just per se a certified educator, but I have assembled educators to prepare and to put this school together. And so here we are today in front of you with great anticipation of what this school will be and what it will represent. Thank you so very much.
All right. Great to see everyone. I just wanted to go back and thank you for that presentation that board chair asked to kind of give us an overview of the renewal process, the charter approval process that we've gone through as an agency. And I know that was incorporated in what you were saying, I mean, but I just wanted to highlight that for you, that you mentioned the application, the R F P applications, you see, the review for completeness, as was mentioned, the public hearings that is required in statutes to get public comments on the merits of the application that you've heard about here, and then the recommendation to the board that is made is where we are. And if the, if the board votes for an approval of a new charter, you're voting for an initial certificate of approval. The school is yet not funded, and so not considered a school, not considered a charter given until the funding is legislated by the legislature. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, and that was, that was asked by our board chair, by our, by our, so thank you.
R F P went out in April, was the judge, December 1st, is that why both came in by December 1st?
Yes.
And are these the only two we're going to see this year, or there's more?
Uh, locations that came in, one was incomplete, and so six were reviewed, of which these two were the ones are moving forward.
Okay. Yes.
Is that a correction? The, 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 the.
Okay.
We mentioned the request for proposal. Does that mean the department initiated the effort? That is, we said the department wants this school. So.
It is, it's required, it's that charter, I mean, it's a request for charter allocation.
So it's just a request specific to ask if anybody wants to.
Right, open a request. Yes.
I see.
Okay.
Questions?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Kimber, to the end of the deal off. Where are you contemplating the school being?
There, there are four locations in New Haven. There are two basic schools now that we've had the opportunity to look at and at this present time.
Okay, thank you.
And as a part of the review process, Ms. Parisi, is it required that, that a school know where it's going? And is there any requirement that any sites that were suggested and application are this actual site at the end of the day?
So it is part of the review process, I'm going to ask you a question that, and that a little bit more.
So the locations are potentially changed depending on when the funds would be allocated to the school. So they may have their eyes on a location right now that's available within the next year, but if the school doesn't get the funding, that location could be grid to someone else.
Thank you. All right. We've certainly heard lots of support, received written letters of support for this as well. I was curious, how frequent is it that the host district sends a letter that is, that is less than supportive? Does that have any bearing?
Doesn't have any bearing. The letter that you sent was basically to, we do send out information to the host district just to get a feel on how they, if they want another charter school or charter school at all. Doesn't have any bearing on it. It would be up to the board to decide whether there is merit in the letter or if we just want to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. But there's no requirement in our process that a school district accept, there's no requirement in the process that there be agreement.
No.
Chairman, I asked you a question about that. I see it was a letter from the committee.
It's a letter from an elected member of the, of the Board of Education, which is a supportive letter, and you also heard testimony today. And there's a letter from the superintendent, which is not critical of this application, but it seems to be critical of the charter.
Right.
School as an institution.
Right, that's why I was going to ask, is the board also was against it? The Board of Education?
What I can speak to is the letter that's attached to the, to the packet here, that, and that you heard in-person testimony, which is from one of the elected members of the Board of Education, so we have that.
Just one number. The board as a whole didn't take a position, I guess.
I can only speak to what is presented in front of us. I don't believe it's a requirement of the process to have, to have the board weigh in. Uh, yes, I'm fair.
As the board member who conducted that hearing, I was impressed that all the procedures and policies were adhered to. As Dr. Parisi has already said, there were over 65 people in attendance. Everybody spoke positive, to include the chief of police. He was there, speaking positive about the creation of this school. And there was a board member who attended who spoke positively. And frequently, when I attend these hearings, it's, you never see a board member showing up, so, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, as far as full board, boards don't usually vote on that. The board doesn't.
No.
But an individual board member did show up, and if I'm not mistaken, the administration is retiring this year.
That's true.
So she's not going to be around anymore.
I will note the one difference you did in the, if you noted in the packet for the previous item that we acted on, Elm City Montessori, you saw an actual action of the, of the local Board of Education. The distinction is that that is the one local charter school, so there is a, there's a, an Elm City Montessori school packet. It is not a requirement for anything else that's coming, for any of the state charter that's coming. And please correct me if I'm wrong, if I've misstated any of that. All righty, wonderful. Yes, Mr. Page.
A question, because I wasn't aware of this, from the application, and I guess on page two of the application, is it a priority preference for schools of single gender?
Yes, I'm glad you looked it up, and wanted some discussion on that. Go right ahead, question.
No, that, that was my question. I, I wasn't aware of it.
Yes, so we have a proposal for us to have a program that is specifically targeted for young men, and that was a question I asked as well. Do you want to speak to that, or Irene?
Thank you. Within the statute, that is allowable, unless it's for asking for a single gender.
Okay, so it's not a preference for those, something that is wild.
Did you make that a school that has a?
It is a preference.
That's a preference. Okay.
Any other questions? We have a lawyer in the room. Hi, she's going to speak to that, but it is a preference in the charter school statute for schools.
So as a mother of two young African-American men, I would have loved to have quite an opportunity for them to be educated in a space that was going to love on them and educate them as young black men. So any other suggestions? Yes.
Was there a motion?
Yes, there was a motion. It is on the table in front of us.
Okay.
Moved by Ms. Sealy and seconded by.
Sorry, I missed that. Well, I have a question. In, on page five in the report, it says that the proponents really did not demonstrate the rationale for the single gender school. So.
Would you like to hear more on that?
Yeah.
Please, please tell us more about the rationale for the single gender school. I did some of the proposal, yes.
One of the rational, my name is Larry Conway. I'm a board member of Edmonds Preparatory Academy and also a former board member of the New Haven Board of Education. But the rationale is that males are, particularly black, brown males are, they're not getting the proper education that, that they need, they're, they're often, they're often misinterpreted. They're, they lead in discipline, they lead in special education, and, and, and most, most of all, it's, it's, it's just the, the lack of love in many situations and, and, and just misconstrued, misconstrued about their, their position. And what we're trying to do is here, is, is to, is to sell hope to some five, eight graders and make the city a better place, which is going to make the state and the country and world a better place. That's our rationale. And follow up, 47 years in business, lifelong learner, learned the last Christmas meeting day.
You just say your name, could have been very sensitive.
Dr. Leroy Williams. And basically what we're trying to do, and I believe is bestly necessary, is sometimes in some situations, guys feel intimidated by women in class, they don't think learning is what they need to be doing, they're more into sports and things like that. And we just, they just want to feel wanted on their level. Doing research on this, we basically realized that a lot of the brain is developed, you know, when they're four or five years old, and many of our boys lack way behind, as Mr. Conway said, the discipline comes in. And everyone wants to be appreciated, and that's one of the things we'll emphasize. Everyone wants to be a part of the vision. We heard a lot of that today. Everyone, all the stakeholders, they be a part of the vision. It just can't be the vision of one part. Everyone wants to be a part of the mission, and more importantly, everyone wants to be successful. Connecticut has created a lot of jobs, we've got jobs coming and going, but the workforce, we, we want to develop the workforce so that kids have an opportunity to do whatever they want to do, whether to go to college, whether to go to the trade, just want to make sure they're trained and they have the proper foundation to move on in whatever they decide to do. But it's more about the love and the caring, and giving them the environment, and basically full-time. Many of our, unfortunately, many of our boys need a lot of, a lot of time. Part of our school, we talk about before-school, after-school, Saturday programs, making that available as part of the day, not mandatory, but highly suggested if you need that. But it's just making sure we educate each child individually at their own ability and not, one size does not fit all, as has been said a number of times today. It's just another tool in New Haven's bag. We are not against New Haven. All of us are retired administrators from New Haven. We read the papers every day, the statistics, what's going on. We just want a chance to put another tool in our bag so that all students have an opportunity to be successful.
I keep questioning, Dr., can I move your mic, the mic that you were referring? Were you trying to say something?
No, I'm just waiting. If, 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 if you need it, we.
Well, yes, thank you. In the, in the material, it says that, that they didn't demonstrate what is a high-quality program and what is best for male group. There's no evidence of correlating the model and achievement. Just wanted to ask the staff if they took that into account.
Can you just share? Can you just share which page you're on?
Page five, towards the bottom, the third, second, second and third bullet points.
So what does it mean for the components, and we go through the, the application?
Turn that on.
So at this time, because it's a proposed school, this is a proposed school, it's not an actual school. So based on what the evidence was being provided, and even some of the research that was provided in the application, that's what we, thank you, um, use to evaluate where they are against these criteria at this time. So, um, given all areas are weighted equally, and then as a combined, it reaches that score to meet the threshold, to meet expectations, to recommend to it to be a state charter.
But it looks as if they didn't really demonstrate why they need a, an all, a male, an all-male school.
So I think the, the scores in front of you reflect what was included in, in their application. Um, and their application has, has reached a threshold that's bringing in front of you. It includes things that, um, were clearly well, well documented, areas where there potentially could have been more, and then that becomes a decision, a decision in front of the board. So I think the staff has scored it based upon what, what was presented in it. Um, and in your consideration, I think the presentation of the, um, team that's proposing this school can add to your, to your understanding and your consideration. Um, so there, there is interest in clearly the model, um, being five to eight, focused on young black males, and the more, um, that you can provide about the thinking and the, the theory of action there about why focusing on putting young black males in a community they gather with educators experienced in, in getting the backs out of them at that age who might be helpful for the board, and now come to you.
Madam Chair, it is not just, um, black males.
I'm sorry.
It is, it is any admission group that desire to, want to attend the Edmond's Preparatory Prep Academy for young men.
I apologize for that. The, the model of white young men at age grade five to eight would be, would be here. Yes.
So this is really, really interesting, and I appreciate your, your thought process. The way I remember, you know, being a, a, a black man in this country, trying to navigate this world, um, I hated school, but I loved to learn. And because I was raised by an single mother, and, you know, I heard a lot today about mothers here, not a lot about fathers. And I knew and always thought about, like, the black man in front of me. And so to your questions, which are very technical questions, there's an adaptive issue in here as well. And I think these men are trying to address that adaptive issue. And the rationale behind all males, because all males in the particular neighborhood that they will be serving, I would imagine, that's why I asked for the school with this. Um, the males need the most help. The males need the most help.
Thank you for those comments, because, I mean, we all know that, uh, females are , have faster growth rate intellectually than males do anyway. And, uh, and in some cases, in a lot of cases, in some of these neighborhoods, our black males are the neediest. So what a wonderful idea to put them together, um, to help and to take away distractions. Okay? That's as basic as I could put it. Okay?
Just for the record, I attended an all-male public high school.
So we know it worked, Doc.
You absolutely know it worked. I know there were no distractions of that time, but there were other veterans. There's always going to be some of them.
Are there any other questions, any other discussion? Yes, a comment, uh, just that are available. And so many times when we disaggregate data in this space, to the point, uh, as the question is made, we look at the disparities, uh, amongst students, students of color, and we also look at males, right, gender differences as well. So this is information that is always in front of this board, as we look at outcomes for all of students, that that information is available. And query, right, we talked about that a lot here as well. All right, Mr. Taylor.
I, I'm just curious about the little note at the bottom of page six. The proposal states while we are in, we are in an all-boys school by the time, we would not exclude any girls, if you're an all-boys girl by your time.
Senator, John, it's your application.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that has something to do with trying to avoid any sexual discrimination in, as a public entity?
And, and all.
They came to that, something to do with that. Okay. All righty. See no other questions. Um, again, this is, uh, in front of you for the granting of an initial certificate for a state charter. Um, and I am ready for a, no, a motion, all in paper. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item seventeen, um, is, uh, State Board of Education accepts, the resolution is that the State Board of Education accept the Commission of Education's recommendation that en lightens a substantial and ongoing interest in Capital Prepory Middletown Charter Schools' application for initial certificate of approval for a state charter. And given the State Board of Education's desire to ensure that those wishing to be heard on that application have a full opportunity to share their opinions regarding such application, the State Board of Education defer to its next scheduled meeting, a final decision on Capital Prepory Middletown Charter Schools' application, and direct the Commission of Education to take any and all action necessary to effectuate this resolution. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It moved improperly seconded? So this language is a little different than what we've been hearing so far, so interested in the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, with me is Felicia Canty, our education consultant, charter school liaison, and representing Capital Prepory Middletown, is head of schools and founder, Dr. Steve Perry. On March fifteenth, again, to reiterate the process, on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in accordance with the statutory process for establishing state charter schools, the Connecticut State Department of Education released a request for proposal. The application for Capital Prepory Middletown Charter School, or referred to also as Capital Prep Middletown, a proposed state charter school to be located in Middletown, Connecticut, was received on December first of twenty-twenty-two. An R C review team composed of C F D managers appointed by the Commission of Education with expertise in curriculum, academic, special education, finance, performance, and other areas reviewed the application clearly. As noted on page three in your documents, Capital Prepory Middletown Charter School scored thirty-eight point one-two points out of a possible fifty-seven points, a summary rating that indicates the applicant needs expectations to operate a successful charter school. Capital Prep Middletown proposed to open with middle and high school grades with a plan to fully increase to serve kindergarten through grade twelve. On February fifteenth, the C F D held a public hearing in the city of Middletown that is unprecedented in such a public hearing. Eighty-three attendees signed up to speak in the two hours allotted to this session. Forty-eight of the eighty-three, including students, parents, and educators, nonprofit leaders, elected officials, and community representatives, were able to speak. Thirty-five percent of those who signed up for the public comment were unable to share their perspective. Since the February fifteenth public hearing, there has been an extraordinary amount of interest in this application for initial certification, primarily through written testimony submitted to the agency and the board. For example, over forty written statements were sent to the board on Saturday, and since then, the C F D has received many more statements, which has been provided to you today as part of the supplemental material. Given this ongoing, unprecedented level of interest, we wanted to ensure both that all of those who wish to share their perspective have the opportunity to do so, and that board members have sufficient time to read and review all such testimony. This is why we are recommending that the State Board of Education defer the final decision on the Capital Prep Middletown application until the board's next scheduled meeting. In summary, we understand the importance of taking timely action. However, we believe it is equally, if not more important, to ensure that all community members impacted by the decision, this decision, have the opportunity to be heard. By deferring this decision, we will be able to guarantee that all voices have sufficient time to be heard, and that the decision is made with ample time for board members to review all the recent testimony. We appreciate your consideration to take action to defer approval to a later date to be determined. We're certainly here to answer questions, and certainly here, we hear from Dr. Perry.
Well, um, I would still be interested in the, well, maybe we'll hear from, from Dr. Perry first, and then, um, you can answer questions on your break.
Sure, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, speak in, in the of Dr. Perry at this point. Good afternoon, and good afternoon, Commissioner Russell Tucker, and to Madam Chair, and to each of you, um, serving with such excellence on this Connecticut Board of Education. My name is Yvette Highsmith-Frances, and I am one of the founding members of the Capital Prep Middletown Advisory Committee. I am a native of Middletown. I am a graduate and a product of the Middletown Public School System, and I am the parent of four children who were all educated in Connecticut Public Schools. I am here today because Capital Prep is a value add, and I was described the other day as being ever the optimist, because I believe that good people do the right thing the right way. But I am puzzled as to why the vote for Capital Prep is being delayed today. I am a woman of faith. I'm a preacher and teacher of the gospel, and so spiritually, I cling to a delay is not a denial. But I don't cling to that today. Delaying this vote for this certification of the charter is a denial. It is a denial of opportunities for this school to potentially receive funding that will allow it to be opened in a manner that is needed, which is expeditiously. We are living in a state of multiple pandemics, and I don't need to remind you of the impact that this world climate has on our young people, particularly children who are vulnerable, children who are living in poverty, children who have special needs, children who have been victimized by structural racism. A delay is a denial of the opportunity for many young people in Middletown to recover from learning loss. A delay is a denial today. We have had, uh, we have galvanized community support. The packet that I sent out to you is documentation of every communication that we have had with the community since August of twenty-twenty-two. We have hosted a total of six forums and opportunities, five of them being in-person. Your own staff are telling you that they have record attendance, because we are from the community. We are from Middletown. We are flanked by pastors with congregations that have decades of history of serving the community, because they are the community. My family is in its fourth generation of highsmiths being educated in Middletown. We are not strangers to the community. We have listened, we have responded to, we have organized all levels of the community in a very forum. We have hosted forums in churches, in community health centers, we hosted a Zoom forum just for our legislature, we have gone to congregations and spoken to folks, we have had an imp help on a Friday evening. It was standing room only, how much for people to sit. There were parents with their children who were interested and asking questions. In that packet, you will see that we created specific social media platforms that pushed out information on a weekly basis. On a weekly basis, since August of twenty-twenty-two, we have convened every Tuesday night, open to the public, a Zoom platform for anyone who was interested to join. We have had folks hop on, hop off, up until last week. We entertained questions and comments. We provide clarity. As you know, as we heard today, there is a lot of confusion around what charter schools do to public school districts. And so I, I am ever the optimist that this board is going to not act around myths and misconceptions, but I agree on the fact that you know that our children are in a dire state in the state of Connecticut around the academic chasm. It is not a gap, it is a chasm. And I believe it was Albert Einstein who was saying over and over again, I think you're going to get a different result. Now is an opportunity for us to do something different for Middletown and communities that will provide young people an opportunity, an opportunity that does not create weathering of families, black mothers and fathers, brown mothers and fathers that have to go and fight and advocate for their children. I don't know about you, but I don't want to sit in a room again on a Wednesday morning, and hear the story of a young girl being called a racial slur by a teacher. Why don't I want to hear it? Because my son, who is now nineteen years old and stands at six foot seven and is a sophomore at Central Connecticut State University, the first time that young man was ever called a racial slur was as a junior in an advisory classroom at Bristol Central High School. That teacher is still teaching. There was no one any more articulate or more of an advocate than I am, but I was rendered to tears in the office with Dr. Sam Galloway, because for the first time in his life, my son was admitted publicly. And then having had all twenty-five other kids in the classroom say the yes that teacher said, they didn't believe the money, because he's a young black boy. It had to get testimony from twenty-five other students. I don't want that experience for another child. So I, I implore you today, if there is something in that application that doesn't cut the muster, we shouldn't leave you. But with the highest score out of seven applications that you reviewed, that your paid staff reviewed, the highest score retabled, what do you think they're going to hear? More of what you did today. You heard six voices that gave dissent to this application. And I would argue that only three of them spoke to the specific Capital Prep Middletown application. The others were holding you accountable as the State Board of Education to ensure that Connecticut children get the absolute best education. So they just make the answer of a moment. And I'm not mad at them about that. But I will be mad at you if you put that moment to denying this opportunity for a need that needs to be met. We are all bright and intelligent and competent and capable people. Thirty days from now is not some flippant casual day on the calendar. Thirty days from now prevent this from being considered for the governor's budget. Thirty days take this application potentially off the table from being funded with dollars for new and expanded charter school opportunities. Postponing this vote is a monumental decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the, uh, Board Education, um, Madam Chair, our commissioner. I'd like to begin by thanking you for your service, and then I'd also like to thank you for allowing me to, um, maintain my fast by not eating it all today. It's, it's among my family, I would never call myself Dr. Steve Perry, because I was born on my sixteen birthday in Middletown, and Public Health Project is called the building, it's torn down now. I was born during a sophomore year and junior year. Yeah, I did go to Middletown schools, and it's important that you understand that I was kicked out of, uh, pre-care, that could actually happen. And then I was retained in the third grade, and then was left in remedial classes until I was in high school. That's my Middletown experience. It happened in the Middletown Hall of Fame, if that means anything, so like being a general in the Salvation Army. But the fact is, here we are as the founders of Capital Prep, a school that has proven itself to be a national leader in education, with the highest score presented before you today, that follows the exact same problem. today that follows the exact same process outlined by our Commissioner with the previously approved school. With six separate public meetings attended by a hundred and fifty plus distinct individuals, over a hundred and fifty signatures to our application, weekly Zoom meetings, fifteen newsletters. You don't get the largest attendance by mistake. It happened because we made it public. But when does the voice of a people become less important? What happens when a room full of people of color have their voice muted? We're not talking about processes here, folks, because if you're talking about cross town performance, Capital Prep is one of the highest performing schools in the state for quite some time, especially when you disaggregate the data, right? When you disaggregate the data, you see that Capital Prep is sacred to Middletown probably schools. They've had six arrests in school without zero. And even if you do that on that road, you see that it's not because their performance of black children is not because of money. In fact, if you were to disaggregate the data and you were to make Middletown's black children their own school system, they would actually be worse than Bridgewater, Capital Prep. There's an academic apartheid right now going on. It's not because the children are not in the same building, they're actually in the same buildings. They're in the same building yet only fourteen percent of the juniors in Middletown are commensurate. That's part of your report card. Fourteen percent. Bridgeport is nineteen, Capital Prep is fifty-seven percent. And yet we discuss the delay? And yet we discuss the delay? Capital Prep at the district is the number two state school in the state for faculty of color. We still want to talk about the importance of bringing black and brown people into the classroom, we're number two out of a hundred and ninety-seven. When does the voice of a people not stand for the voice of a people? Today, people took time off of work. I was asked, I can bring buses, I delivered, I ain't bring buses. There were more who wanted to come but couldn't get childcare, only get ten PTO days. Why are we having a conversation now, an honest question about why now? Your own processes is followed and we're being penalized because we generated so much energy around the school and our community, clearly it was I was born, she was born? That's our problem? That's our failure? Our failure is that we were too big? We performed too well? Mine is, is, is a final statement, they said fifty-five people spoke at the other one, well, seventy-nine had access and we know that the ones who didn't speak were Capital Prep. So if you want to know what you think, what they think, they were here today, we brought them. So can we move forward now? Can we move forward with what we came to do, which is to make sure that your own processes follow ninety days from the application to today, which you be today? A vote is supposed to occur. So that's today. We have done everything. My children are watching. They're fantastic. Things that were said about my kids are not cool. Not okay. Blacks and brown children who are all going to college are said to be aggressive and threatening. That's why we're here. Be honest. Be honest. The community spoke. Middletown spoke. That is how you're going to require it in the presentation, it doesn't even have to be from one community, just that it is a community. But in our case, Middletown came in. What more do we have to do? Finish here. I'm not just a Capital Prep founder, I'm a father. Both of my sons went through Capital Prep, she had eight, what I killed. And one of them also got an associate's degree before he graduated high school. He's also at the university, comes back, not doing as well as her daughter because we got to pay, it's really expensive. And the other one is at Morehouse. Our kid is called Capital Prep historically Black High School. We kind of think that's cool. We all right with that. So for us by us, we teach our children that to be twice as good, but this is more than twice. This is greater than twice. To have the highest score, eighteen years of success in the state, internationally recognized as an academic leadership organization. And we, in the middle of the process, come up with an arbitrary extension. So we tell our children, African-American and Latin children, that they have to have faith in the system. You gotta have faith in the system, you gotta believe in the system. Do I go back to the Bridgeport and Harlem and the Bronx and try and answer that question now and table this? Why shouldn't I? We did everything right and won. We won. Now we gotta do a do-over? For what? For what are we aiming for? We've done everything else asked, Madam Chair and Commissioner, we've done everything else asked. Board members, we met all of your rules. Please, by your own rules and law, that is all we are asking. We are not asking for a single favor.
Thank you. Board members, what questions do you have? Yes, please.
Actually, I don't have a question. I have a question.
Please.
There's nothing that has been said or that I've read that I've heard that seems to justify for me why we would need to actually extend the time as has been repeated, repeatedly. They maybe did everything in the same way that we want them to. But I'm, I'm just not convinced, I think.
I see, just one minute.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to give a million sentiments. I also point out the need for an extension. And if we were to, my question, what does the extension achieve in terms of what it was going to look like throughout the board? And I'd also really like to understand what this, from the DSE perspective, what would be harming potentially this application and this possibility for the students in Middletown and their region? So what are we going to do in the thirty days or longer, actually?
So let me, so thank you for your question and thank you, Dr. Perry and Highsmith and for all that. And you said, Dr. Perry, the voice of the people, which is still critically important. And the recommendation is so this board is the voice of the people. The, the public hearing, as you mentioned, we talked about unprecedented because you did a phenomenal job and the interest is there and folks came out and so there were those who weren't able to speak during their limited time. Since that timeframe, and I know Board Chair, you know, asked us to make sure we get out on social media and all that to make sure the community knows that they can certainly send information in. We sent a packet of information out to the board that we receive on Saturday with forty-two testimonies in it. I am sure you, sorry you read through those testimonies, but in your packet this morning, you've got thirty-four additional testimonies that I believe you've not had a chance to take a look at. And so the recommendation was based on the point of this board being able to honor the voices and of the testimonies that you're receiving that in your decision vote are based on the information that you received. And so the recommendation from the department was to allow the extra time that you could honor the information that's been submitted to you from all those that we said that we're open to hearing a testimony, you could come in to buy testimony or you can send testimony in writing to us. So you have that information that you receive on Saturday and additional information that you receive in your package this morning that you've not had a chance to take a look at. So this was the matter, this is not the merits of the school at all. This was about honoring the voices, this board having the time to honor the voices of the information that you received from the community, the community that we've talked about. That was the basis of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the clarity. But I didn't honor the voices of the people all my life. And, you know, I, I, I still don't understand why we would delay a vote today. I've read everything, I've listened, I've just listened intently, especially to the children because schools are meant for educating children, not for appeasing adults. And so for me, again, I, I, you know, I don't understand the delay and it says to me a lot about the way it's been treated when coming home to help. So again.
In the paperwork, it says that the clear intent of this public hearing requirement is to provide an opportunity for individuals in whose district the proposed charter school will be located to gain the additional information. So the hearing was intended for people in Middletown, but as I understand it, most, most of the people there came down from the Bronx.
I'm not sure where that information came from, so let's close that as a question. Do you have a breakdown from the hearing of the voices that were heard, whether they were from Middletown or from other places? And secondly, can you just clarify what the requirement of the statute and regulations are? Does it need to be people from, solely from Middletown?
No, it's, it's, it's easy for the surrounding districts as well to come out and speak. I don't have that breakdown in front of us right now, but we can provide that.
We do, we do.
We, we, be interested in hearing your breakdown?
So, um, yeah.
So there were eighty-one people who signed up to speak at the public hearing that was publicized by the Board of Education. Fifty were called, thirty-one were not. There were, as we started the hearing, the first few people who spoke were all from Middletown. And then at around seven oh nine PM, the hearing started at six, a member of the team stood up and reinforced the three-minute rule, reminded folks you need to speak only for three minutes. Someone from the audience jumped up and said, we need to hear more people from Middletown, the, their town of residence. And all but five were from Middletown. And at that point, the staff changed the rules, which is you are called by order of sign-in, as we did this morning. You called every person, Madam Chair called every person in order of sign-in. At seven oh nine PM, the staff made a decision, are to look at the sign-in sheet and to cherry pick people who were called.
So if I may, so.
Just one second, from six to seven oh nine, you're saying all but five of those speakers were from Middletown?
So initially, the first five were from Middletown, then we had students speak. The majority actually does not say that the people have to be from Middletown, period. What it says is that the hearing must be held in the community. It doesn't say who has to speak, it says that it's a public hearing. That's, so that's the first part, just to answer the board member's question. And the second part about it is the list was put together and publicized and we went through, the, the staff went through and started calling in order. They called in order up to number twenty-five. And then a man stood up in the audience and said, we hear from more Middletown people. And then the next thing, next voice we heard was a staff member who said, we're going to start calling out of order. And we have added it because we have a picture of the, the actual list that we do, like we do today. And we looked at it and we saw who was there because we knew who was coming because we had publicized it. And what we found was that twenty of twenty-one people who spoke were from Middletown. And what we also found is that anytime a name from Bridgeport was on the list, it was skipped. Anyone that was from any of our other schools, it was skipped. So the next number that was called was seventy-something. We went from twenty-six to seven-something. I cannot imagine that this body wants us to continue down this vein. All we're asking, please, please, is that we just stick to the rules.
I have a question here and I think.
No, I'm just, I'll show you that, this is the shit that the, the board member who always called.
I was there on the fifteenth and I have a different memory of what happened. The children that spoke, there were a number, a number of kids who signed up and they were fabulous, articulate ambassadors for Capital Prep. They're on the sheet, the sign-in sheet, many people did not put where they were from. We had no idea where, whether they were from Bronx, there was a bus of people from, two buses, there were four buses. There were two schools from New York and then Hartford and Bridgeport, as far as I know. There were four hundred and something people in the room, two lots of charities. And so there was no way we were going to get all eighty-five people to have three minutes to speak. And we had heard from a fair number of students, quite a few students.
Eleven.
Eighteen, actually. Okay. But, and, and, you know, it was wonderful to hear from them, but it was a repetitive message and there were a lot of people, there wasn't even room for everybody to sit. So we did deviate for maybe five people listening.
We did deviate. So I do have my list. There were twenty Middletown residents that spoke in total. There were six Middletown residents that spoke in opposition. The other twenty did speak. There were eighteen Capital Prep Harbor students that spoke, so those were the individuals that were from Bridgeport. Other than that, the list that we did not get through, those individuals did not have names, next, address next to where they were, so we did deviate from that list.
Okay, I'm sorry, the twenty-six you're trying to have that spoke are all from Middletown? And it was twenty-four and six opposed?
Yes.
But they were all from Middletown from your record? Okay. Then there were also eighteen students that spoke? And then the people that did not speak or that were passed over were people that didn't have an address next to them, so you didn't know?
We had to count. So there were people from Cromwell, Ellington, Meriden, West Haven and New Britain.
Okay, and they were not called on because they were not from the?
They did not get a chance.
And ran out of time.
Yeah.
That's the timeframe that's set. I mean, we didn't set the timeframe.
Ma'am?
We understand that. The, the time that is allotted is that two-hour timeframe from six to eight PM.
Ma'am? Without all due respect, memories can be what memories are. But then they are what we remember. And where we should have continued the list, those people who were locked out were still from Middletown. It's just that simple. I, I don't know any other way to say it. And, and so the decision, we don't even understand, we're curious really, why the state's proven twenty-year process was aborted in the middle of a proceeding? We don't even know what, why that was so. What we know is what we saw. We saw a largely black and Latin room and we saw a man who was not black or Latin but white stand up and say, we need more Middletown people called. And then the next act was to start handpicking outside of the order.
No. I'm sorry.
Let's say it. Okay.
So the people were, we called on both.
Can you keep some, some order to it?
So my excuse is, you know, my, my, my point is that we had people there and they're Middletown people spoke, but they're also contiguous towns. So that's the first part of this. So the debacle that that was, so there's that. And then it was fairly stated that up until the twenty-third, people have time to comment in writing. I don't know why anyone's discussing comments should have come after the twenty-third. What if our rules is not to be followed? Why wouldn't the announcement be made? So if an announcement was made at the top of the meeting, how the meeting would go, we'll call it order, you have three minutes. That was changed. Then after that, it was you have until the twenty-third. That apparently now is being changed.
So let me just clarify for that, for that piece because this, this meeting, being a public meeting with public participation, the public did all. public participation, the public is always allowed to comment on anything that's on our agenda. So we will accept comments as we have heard people in person, and people can send their comments to us on anything that's on our agenda in advance. I do have a question for staff. Well, I recognize that this was the most well-attended public hearing that we've had. Have there been experiences in the past with a charter hearing or with charter process that you've been responsible for, where the amount of inter-succeeded timeline of two hours, and do we have a precedent of what we've done on that before?
Well, we have gone over the time just a little bit. If we had gone over the time that evening, it would have been well over two hours.
To hear everybody.
So if the time is from six to eight, we have gone to maybe like eight fifteen, just because there were a few more names. There are board members here that can attest to that. But the, if we had gone through the entire list, it would have been well over two hours.
I see. Okay.
And just that I can add, the process had already taken place in New Haven for Edmund Cofield, so we were following the same process.
Same process. Okay, thank you. Mr. Herrick?
Well, but I could have been that hearing for the Cofield process. And Felicia Kenji was sitting right next to me, and we, as we always do, we went step from one, two, three, four. We didn't do any skipping around. We never do any skipping around. I'm in agreement with Malia and Martha and Eric. I'm really not sure why we are delaying. I also read this mountain of material that was sent to me over the weekend, describing that hearing. I have a lot of friends all over the state, but I've got some persons that I called and had a private conversation with, who are members of my church, by the way. And, "Were you in attendance at the hearing?" "Yes, they were." I said, "Was there a lot of booing and that sort of stuff going on?" "No, there was not." Apparently, one person booed, but that person was instantly rebuked. So that didn't occur. But yet, you read these statements, and there was booing all over the place. Not true. I'm also thinking that we've just gone through two and a half hours of public comment. The majority of it was regarding to Capital Prep, but only six people came forward against it. So they had that same opportunity to take time off from work and to be here. No, they're sending emails. So I'm agreeing with you, my friend.
And the sending email is about a way of getting us public comment, and so those are reviewed with the same integrity of listening to the people that have come here. And we should balance what we've read and what we've heard with the information that's been presented to us by the staff that was in the room, by our board member who convened over this, provided this, convened over it. That's because I was up till one o'clock in my own public meeting, two hours, we still had a lot. But our board member who presided over the meeting and the testimony that we've heard here today, we certainly have heard the recommendation of our commissioner and their desire to balance and to ensure the integrity of the process. And I think we've heard that, and heard the voices of all of our board members here. Is there any further discussion on this item? I think it might be good to discuss what our options are at this point, because we do have a motion on this table. Yes, I got a couple of questions coming.
Awesome. This is not a question of fairness, I don't think this works. I want to be loud. I've read through all of the material that was sent to us. I've read through even most of the material that was given to us this morning, I'm a fast reader. And looking through all of those emails, is any detraction from Capital Prep? I mean, even looking at some negative statements, there are no, the vast majority do not have any specific, they don't point out specific drawbacks with what's in this paper here. I mean, it seems to me as though voting in favor of this motion would vastly, would create more of a negative impact than, you know, voting against it. And I can't vote on this body, but if I could, I would also be voting no on this motion. I think it's important that we keep this process going, give Capital Prep a fair shot at a vote, like all the other charter schools have gotten today. And that's my true sense.
Your voices are very important, despite the fact that we've not a vote with it, but we certainly want to hear those voices. Mr. Herrick, and then, I think I go.
Yeah, I, for one, I don't like, I feel my job here is to not only be supportive of the community, but we need to be supportive of our commissioner. And having said that, I don't want to vote against the motion because I'm voting against what she is recommending. I'm just wondering, is there...
With the motion on the table, there is always action to amend the motion that's on the table.
Or a substitute motion?
There is an opportunity to substitute a motion. Let me get to the project before you think about what that might be.
Yeah, this is a question for Larry. So if it were delayed to next month, I know there's a second part of the process where then they have to approve funding with legislature, is that how that works?
Yes.
So would they still have the opportunity to get that funding if it's delayed to next month for the upcoming budget time to figure?
So a couple things. One is, it would be up to this body if you were of the money that you felt you needed more time to consider this. We should not lock ourselves into saying that the only opportunity would be a month from now, so we could convene in between that time in a special meeting. I do think it's important that we hear, though, from any perspective, on what are the steps, the timing, so that everybody is of the same understanding. So if, I mean, your team wants to weigh in on that and the implications for the funding, I think that's important. I would also love to hear from the Capital Prep team, who I am sure is tracking this very closely about understanding the legislative process and the impact. But I think more of us understand the impact of delay from both of your perspectives.
As you all know, based on legislation, this board's action is for an initial certificate of approval. That is, the school is a concept until the legislature appropriates the funds for the school to operate. We are truly in a legislative session right now. I know the governor's budget certainly did not have funding for charter school, but there's a lack of conversations that is occurring in this space. As you may or may not know, that this board gave the certificate of approval for two charter schools, for two concept schools, if you want to call it that, four years ago? Five years ago, that have not been appropriated funding by the legislature. So those are not up and running as schools right now. So there's this whole legislative process. I am sure for the previous school or this school, will be, the minute they get an approval from this board, the certificate of approval, we have a conversation about funding with the legislature in that process. To which we, the board's decision at this point is about an initial certificate of approval and not the funding that happens after the legislative process.
Oh, Mr. Herrick, and then, if the dual ones are provided...
Really quickly, you know, I too do not like, again, speaking commissioner. And I consider myself a very fair person. But I think Praja's question is really good, and I recall vividly, I think it's Mr. Felipe's testimony around funding and the legislative process, which is super important. However, there's something even deeper at play here that we should not just allow to rest on the opportunities for funding and the timing of funding. And I just wanted to say that, right, that I think this is, you know, although process was not followed, but this could, like, really set precedent, in my opinion. And again, there's something deeper, as I listened this morning and as I read, there's something more deeper at hand here than just funding in the legislative process. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah.
So, thank you for staying. Because we are in a conversation now as the process has been completely undone and continues to be written as we're in it, though there is an existing process. We can't just make it up because someone who doesn't represent even the majority of the opinions in any iteration of this conversation, that someone or ones, somehow actually someone or someones, to have us rewrite the state's laws. So yes, there is something of this. There is a foul order. And so for us, we have an obligation as citizens to maintain the letter of the law. I just can't believe I'm saying this. There's a process that's been put in place, and there's been no threshold mentioned. And with all due respect, the community has spoken resoundingly. So I'm not sure which community we're waiting on now, because this one has spoken many, many times. So now that they said, do we keep extending the opportunity, we kick the can down the street? For what reason? A reason still hasn't been given. There is not a single issue, and I say so metaphorically, that we get everyone to agree on, we are Americans, not Quakers. That is not the threshold here. And so as such, we had the highest score, we had the most amount of published meetings, we had the highest attendance, we had the most number of letters of support, we had the most number of signatures. We went door to door in the winter. And who were we waiting for? What's the great pumpkin for which we're waiting? We're here now. We've done everything that we were asked to do. We appreciate you, Mr. Commissioner, Dr. Commissioner, and I don't want you to doubt that we have done what your office has asked. And so, as a result, what the expectation from our people is that we act with fidelity to the law, and that we not create new circumstances so that any time anyone comes up and goes through the process, that someone can at whim undermine the process. So yes, it will impact our funding, and yes, it will make it impossible for us to open because there's another part of the funding that is the money that has been put aside, the twenty-three million dollars that we can't even get access to until we have this vote. So that means we couldn't have a conversation about a planning year, to be able to hire people to come on and work for the year. That means we couldn't start to identify potential locations. That means we couldn't do the things that are necessary. So they were put further behind eight ball, not because we did anything wrong, but because no one, to my knowledge to this day, has presented us with a reason to breach your own policies. If we breach your policies, we'd be out of the conversation.
So, so thank you. I will say again what I said before, and I would hope that what I say is not discounted. I shared very clearly the recommendation that I made and the reason I stand by that recommendation for voices to be heard. The number of people who were not able to be heard at the meeting, for whatever reasons, we can talk about that. And for those forty-two, seventy-six in total, thirty-four that you received this morning, thank you, Val, for being a fast reader, I'm not sure everybody else around the table, been able to do that. And the board can certainly make a decision based on that, that, you know, those thirty-four others, you don't necessarily need to take the time to review because you've heard enough. That's one. But I made very clear the position that I'm taking. And so to say you've not heard that, it's a discount what it is that I shared. So I hope, you know, we can, we can, we can address that because that really is important. The other thing I want to be sure of, and I know we've got Mike in the room, because I want to know what process it is or the law that we're violating and not following. I want that on the record is very clear, because this process is a process we've followed, the process we've followed for the previous school. And so I just want to be clear that this board understands that, and those watching in the community understands the process that we've followed and where we are right now.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Sorry. Ten Dad sixty-six double B addresses the whole process for the charter school application as well as related charter school matters. And some section F1 says for the process by which the state has to follow when there's an application for a new initial certificate for a state charter school. One of the prerequisites is to hold a public hearing on such application in the school district in which the application, excuse me, in which such state charter school is to be located. I think it's clear that the intent of that is to ensure that those in the community, those, not necessarily just in that district, but from the district and those surrounding districts from which students most likely be drawn, are heard on their opinions with respect to the state charter school, both positive and negative. With respect to the requirements this board votes, statute merely provides that they will vote on a complete application, not later than ninety days after the date of receipt of such application. So this being the ninetieth day, the board has to take a vote. Statute number does not say what that vote needs to be. It does not necessarily have to be an acceptance, it does not necessarily have to be rejection, it has to be a vote. And on the one hand, it's to ensure that those who have applied and have gone through this process are not left in a void just to drift, but rather, there has to be some concrete action by the board. Were the board to vote to defer its determination on this, it would be voting, it would be taking an action, it would be doing so within ninety days, it would not be violating the law as it has been accused of doing, but it would be in compliance with the law. But there must be some sort of vote.
So, thank you, Mike. As I said, I wanted to be clear in this space what it is that we're doing, and the board can always take an action, but I would need to be on the table that we are not following the law for what, for this process.
Understood. Understood.
I'm sorry, I'm intrigued. You're saying that we're not, we're breaking the law, I don't know what we're talking about?
No, she's saying we're not.
Right.
We're not.
No, I think just to actually further clarify, because I think you have offered two interpretations of lists. The first one was regarding to the public hearing.
Right.
There was one. People showed up, there were lots of people.
Yeah, exactly.
But you're not, as far as, is that my phrase in this question? As far as you understand how we've broken the law with how that public hearing was conducted?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Herrick?
I don't see any, with all respect to the commissioner, and I have all respect to the commissioner, but I don't see reason to defer a decision. I think we have what we always have for going ahead, this process in the state, unlike in, I don't know, most other states, certainly many other states, I suspect, unlike in most other states. Ultimately goes to that great judicial body across the street, or up the street, and with the state legislature, and they retain control. It's not the way it is. It seems to me that if our requirements have been met, and I haven't heard that they have been, Commissioner, if I've missed something, which is increasingly certainly possible, then tell us. But if we have a complete application, if a complete application appears to us to meet the criteria, it seems to me we should go ahead and vote on it. And if we do that, it's where my intent is to vote. But why we would wait for the legislature to, the legislature won't even consider it, I suspect. It won't make a, if the state board approves that here's the money, start it, kind of decision, or at least I'd be surprised if they did. It's a great excuse for them not to act on something that is... It's a great excuse for them not to act on something that is always to some degree controversial. So if it's ripe for our decision, I think we ought to make our decision.
I think I saw one of the end.
Yeah, I think I'm maybe sort of echoing what Ellen said, just in terms of, my understanding of the decision that we're meaning to make is it's more around, is this concept viable? Do we believe this concept is viable to move forward so they can take their next step? Our job is not to decide, the decision is not around, we don't get to make decisions about whether we believe charter schools are right for the state or not. Those are all legislatively dictated. From my quick going through of the emails that we were provided today, the majority of the opposition is around funding being, you know, taken from Middletown and very much really addressing those two pieces. Whether there's validity in charter schools and whether or not there's enough money to go around, both of which we have no say over. So, in echoing and undersporing really what the department has said, I still don't understand why we would necessarily need to wait. I appreciate the thinking from the Commissioner. I don't feel like I need more time. If folks felt that there was more time that was needed, I'd rather that we pause for thirty minutes, allow us to read them, come back, and then make a decision. I don't feel like I need to do that at this point, but I wouldn't want to delay for an entirely different meeting.
All right. So at this point, we have a motion on the table which reflects the Commissioner's desire, the department's desire to allow more time for process. And we have had lots of discussion on that at this point. And many members already indicating sort of where they are on this. So, the question is, are we ready for a correction on this? Or is there an amendment that is to be proposed on this item? What's in front of you right now is to delay to a next meeting, which does not have to be the next meeting, but...
I would like to suggest an amendment. I don't have the quick access to the language of the previous charter that we just gave the initial to, but my recommendation is to amend this to match that previous language.
Is it an amendment or a substitute motion?
Whichever, legally right.
Substitute motion to, on the other school.
The grant to this charter because of approval for state charter.
Which is ten point six six B B.
And can I just know something that there?
Certainly could help us.
The prior resolution that the board voted on, like to Edmunds Colfield, that as is often the case in these resolutions, in these matters, it, subject to conditions noted in the supporting memorandum or the memorandum from C F T E, clearly it appears from where the board is directed, the motion, the resolution they'd like to vote on here does not have those conditions in the supporting memorandum. So I think the language of this one would need to be slightly different.
How quickly can you write?
I've got it written right here. I've written it.
And you want me to read it?
Well, I think you might want, yeah, you might want to, hold on a second, yeah. Let me just make sure I got all my stuff lined up here. I don't want to have maybe a typo in hand if you read it, making me look stupid in front of everyone. So let me read it real quick. I gotta change something. Just give me two seconds.
No, it isn't what you mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Are he words that, do we need to withdraw the motion, previous motion? Well, I think an amendment would be made of it, but...
Well, we're part of the dawn, we're experts.
This is a substitute motion, I think.
What?
Yeah, we were...
It's a substitute motion.
Whatever one gets us to being able to consider what might...
Once you have the language, I'm gonna entice a motion from you to amend what we have to say, something different. But I just want to make sure I have the right language.
Well, I think the idea was that people from Middletown didn't have enough time to be heard at that hearing. So, we were given the additional information of a weekend act this morning that we needed more time to read.
You've got all of those emails. You've got all of the emails.
We just got them this morning, right?
No, you got them over the weekend, Luke.
But, no, but there were more this morning, right? Yeah?
Yes, yes. Yeah, she receives a package when you arrive here to them.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, I could offer an amendment to, for the three minutes to read through the one that we got this morning.
Before you, there's an amendment in your work.
All right.
Are you asking for a recess, Woody? Because you can move that.
Well, Maria mentioned the point of having extra time to read what we got this morning. It's one of our best years, like, no. Not like that.
So shall I go forward? So, at this point, the chair is, the board is open for either an indication that you're ready to vote on what we have or that someone wants to put forth an amendment. Yes.
I would like to put forth an amendment.
Sorry. I think it would probably be a substitute motion. Who made the original motion? Was that you, Mr. Eric?
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The original motion was made by Mr. Clemmons and seconded by Mrs. Sealy.
Well, I think it could be a substitute motion, or Mr. Clemmons could have meant his original motion, whichever.
What is the language for that?
Well, Mrs. Sealy has it.
The motion was to bring the resolution to the floor, correct?
Yeah, right. The chair is open right now to amend that the body may make one of them.
I want to get this right.
It's right there, right?
I think it's...
Sure.
I move to amend the higher motion as follows. Resolved. Resolved that the State Board of Education pursuant to Section ten six six B B of the Connecticut General Statutes grant an initial certificate of approval for a state charter to Capitol Preparatory Middletown Charter School located in Middletown, subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to Section ten six six B B A two of the C G S, based on legislative appropriation of funds, such charter school may be valid for a period of three years. Receipt of all completed documentation related to facility requirements, including safety, liability, and insurance certification prior to school opening. Three, receipt of all required and completed documentation relating to incorporation status and identification of governing board members prior to school opening. And further directs the Commissioner to take the necessary action. But vote.
Okay, there are any second on the amendment? Second? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. So, just to be clear, is that the, the language you just read is the same general thing we did to the other one? Or are these some different condition?
Right, well, the resolution itself is different, but like I explained before, this supporting memorandum with respect to Edmunds Colfield and with respect to Capitol Preparatory were two different memoranda. So, to ensure that the standard conditions that are part and parcel of these resolutions was included, I put it actually in the resolution itself on this one.
Okay, because that type of language appeared in the memo of the other...
My understanding from the charter office is that's standard language with respect to the application of new charter schools.
Okay, I'm just seeking consistency.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I don't have that written in front of me to restate it for you all, but that amended motion that's been seconded would be granting initial certification of approval subject to the conditions that are outlined in the statutes. That if you need red again, I would need to have Eric read it. I don't have all of that. And so that's been moved and seconded. The substitute motion, the substitute motion. Okay, but the resolution that has been made, can you read the beginning of your resolution?
To say, you know...
I thought the beginning of what you said was...
I'll read it again. I'll read the preamble. Resolved that the State Board of Education pursuant to Section ten six six B B of the Connecticut General Statutes grants an initial certificate of approval for a state charter to Capitol Preparatory Middletown Charter School located in Middletown, subjected, subject to the following conditions.
Okay, so the substitute motion made by, has been made by Eric. And did I get a second?
Yes.
And by, thank you. Okay. Yeah, I worked in the chair today. All right, is there discussion on the substitute motion?
So the conditions are the same.
Yes.
Between the two, yes, be true or in general?
Yes.
That is the one.
Three years.
Yes. And three years is consistent with what's done and other?
Yes.
Okay, I need, better than I need, not from the audience, I need somebody to recognize and come to the mic. So, what we did earlier was a different thing. Those were five and four years. On initial certification, is that typically granted with a par three appearing?
Correct.
For new schools, okay.
We're not having a section about three years. And then also has been, well, yes. Because the first page is confusing, the language is up to five. No problem, I won't.
Okay, understood, understood. All right. So I need the certifications. I thought what was being suggested there was that the three years was sort of that this action we're taking is good for three years. What the Commissioner is saying for me is that if they're funded, that that initial funding period would be three years. I just need a little clarification on what the three years is, that's in this language, that's in their motion, that's been moved and seconded.
It's supposed to be three years. I don't know whether a page is missing. Is this, is it Edmunds Colfield? So what is, as soon as I've got the slide in hand?
What is posted on the website and presented to you in advance of this meeting, it would be page four, and it states the recommendation with conditions. And those three conditions are listed there.
I'm sorry, page four of the Colfield package?
I know, there's a problem, I think, with the copies that remain.
Yeah, I just think four.
Oh, I don't have a four.
I know, I know, I've been missing pages two and four. We'll miss the page.
Okay, understood. Is there readiness on this or do people need more information? All right, so that what we understand now to be the motion, the substitute motion that's been moved and seconded is for initial certification of approval of the Capitol Preparatory Middletown Charter School's application here, subject to the conditions that are consistent with all other actions on initial certification. Okay. Any other discussion?
So we are in agreement at this point that it's three years.
I am getting affirmation from the staff that would be a three-year period? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the one that's on the website, it is three years.
Chair, the legislation, assigned to that? Could you just share what the legislation is? That says the three, the three years. What you have on line, could you just read that?
So I'm not fast reader, I'm a liberal school. Last, last time. It's up to five.
Jordan said five for the state charter.
It says right here, this charter makes it valid for a period of five, so why not five?
I'm two five, and it's attached to recommendation with previous calls, which is the twenty eighteen. The recommendation was three years, as is with this recommendation.
But just for clarity, just for clarity, Madam Chair, so what we have in front of us is a memo from the Commissioner to the Board of Education with today's date and the executive summary for the state charter to Edmunds Colfield Preparatory Academy, Section ten dash six six B B A. And it reads, "An initial certificate of approval for a charter shall be deemed effective as of July first of the first physical year for which funds are appropriated." And then it goes down, it says, "Such charter may be valid for a period of up to five years." So is the language used that, the language says nothing about three years.
But then again, on page four, we have our recommendation for three years. In the summary of the introduction, provide the background.
Mike, could you just, the statute for, whatever you do with statute is. And could you just share a less direction now for why three years? It could be up to five, but they're recommending three. Could you just share a less direction now?
New schools that were approved by the state, we done three years, just to keep a hold of eye on new schools. It doesn't mean anything bad about it. It just means that we just want to keep a closer, have a better relationship and get a closer bond with the school just because they are new schools. So five years are traditionally for schools that are existing and, you know, they have done the work. Three years is not, it doesn't mean anything bad. It just means we want to have a closer relationship with the state.
And that started with the set that was approved.
Um, the Danbury and Noah Walks school.
Yes. And there, we love our relationship with S V E, we enjoy bonding with you. But our initial school, because this is not a first school at all, for eighteen years into this. So, if the threshold was that it was new, then sure, but we're not. And our school in Bridgeport, Capitol Harbor, received its initial of five years. So, and that one was a new charter school, though not new, because we had a run through math school before that. So, if the thought behind it, if the rationale for three is new, we're not new by any stretch. So if the language could reflect the legislation as it's written, then that would seem to me to be consistent.
So, when did Capitol preppal open, the Harvard School?
Certainly, two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, and the initial certificate is staying into play on two thousand, in two thousand fifteen. So the statute changed in two thousand fifteen, which is why we started looking into it and decided to go with the three years for new schools. Not a system one.
Just to point, because you have as a board, you have as a body, you have as an office, you have a trapdoor. If at any point we do not meet, I mean, at any charter, it's in the same circumstance, that you can do what you wish. You have regular visits with us and regular communication with us, offering us a five year as it is, up to five years, especially if the threshold is that you, three is renewed, would seem to me to be consistent with what we're hearing even here today.
Understood. And at this point, we have a staff recommendation that that initial certification be for three years. Is there any board discussion on that? Is there any more discussion on that? Before we talk about?
So are there other charter schools in the system that have multiple locations that would have added, have they been changed over to three years? Or, you don't see them as being like, but keep it first, I have multiple locations. As very example of another charter school that was adding, system of adding another building, that's.
Not since two thousand fifteen, no. Well, that's, yeah, well, that's a new school.
Which is my.
So she asked about any existing charters.
No, I was about, just an existing charter entity that's adding a school, has other entities that have added school, then.
I think, when I look, take away from the board here, we're trying to get to consistency and, and be, be clear that what's being done for this school is consistent with what's being done at other places. So what I'm hearing that the law changed since that point has been to grant a three year, and did you base that on it being a new charter operator to the state versus whether they already had existing, or was it just three years was your initial certification regardless?
Three years for an, an initial certification.
Okay, regarding to whether the operator at other schools, I, I just want to check whether that factor then at all?
Yes.
Three years is in.
Three years.
Okay, all right, so that, that would be this process consistent since two thousand fifteen, it sounds, because that's been a three-year certification granted.
That's the one that's.
Okay, so, again, folks, you've been hanging in a long time, I appreciate it. I do need though to maintain some degree of order here, so I'm not going to take things from the, from the public. If somebody wants to come to the table, and, come to the table, that's fine. All right, are we ready for the vote? All right, all right, so we now have a motion for approval of initial certification for this school.
On the amended?
No, no, we have a substitute motion that's on the floor now. We're not, Don has taught me, I'm not giving amendments. We have a substitute motion that's on the table now, that, I can't get you the exact language, just because he typed it out over there. And it was moved improperly seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Can you rewind to the moment of person? If we could, do you want lunch, or do you want, just, okay. Okay. How much time do you, here I'll need to eat. Can you eat one minute? Yeah, could you be back by two thirty? I know it's no long day. All right, we're going to be in reset until two thirty on this one.
Right now, it's down in B.
In D. All right, thank you for that indulgence. We will reconvene at two thirty four. And we are, by the emptying of the room, we are excited to hear our audio seven F, the components of social, emotional, intellectual habits. This is being brought to us as an action item, this is something for the board to approve. So, I can't get myself. Okay, so we have a resolution, state board resuiting Act twenty-one nine dash ninety-five, an act concerning authority revisions in addition to the education statutes, adopt the components of social, emotional, and intellectual habits, grade four to twelve, and direct the commissioner to take necessary action. Is there a motion on this item? Moved improperly seconded. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board members. We are here today to talk to you about the social, emotional, intellectual habits for grades four through twelve. We also presented to and spoke with the academic standards assessment committee, this action is coming from them. And so I will turn it over to the, the team, I want to acknowledge Kim Traverso and Joanne White, who are the lifeblood of this work, been working on it for a very long time. And our appreciation to all of their hard work. So you're certainly familiar with social, emotional learning, we've been talking about it for quite a while, and it's been front burner on the, during COVID, certainly, a lot of initiatives going on at the department. We've talked to the board about the SESA student assessment, SEL assessment that's underway, the commission of behavior health pilot happening in seven schools. Also, over a hundred and eighty million dollars in school districts implementing social, emotional learning, and the most recent of twenty-eight million dollars in grant funds that the department is issuing to districts to hire additional social, emotional, mental, and behavioral health staff to assist in that endeavor. So this is one more very important tool in the bag. And the thing that I like the most about this document is sometimes when we talk about social, emotional learning, we're, we're up here, we use a lot of education speak. This is a great way to understand how the concepts scaffold in a classroom, in a school building, and how students can build on and develop additional skills, you know, through and weaving them into different classroom activities and through all of their subjects. So this is a, we're hoping to operationalize this as soon as it's approved, and then subsequently, we will be incorporating the initial K to three habits into the four through twelve habits to sort of have the entire K twelve gamut of social, emotional, intellectual habits for K twelve. So with that, I will turn it over to Kim, who's going to walk through a little bit of the document itself.
Thank you, John. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Madam Chair. First, before I get started, I'd just really love to thank our commissioner, also John Zazanelli, who's my boss, and also Irene Perisi, who is, here on this side, who is the chief for academics. And we would not have been able to go through this process without their support, so I do want to just make sure that we recognize them today, because we are here today because of their support. And I also would like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Joanne White, who is my partner in all of this, and she's going to have a chance to certainly speak to you in more detail regarding these acumen. And there's some key words here, for social, emotional learning, I'm going to use the word SBL, or the acumen SBL, and also I am going to call them habits, so that we're not going through this whole process, just so that you know that. So my job today was to really provide you with a context on what we're doing around SBL work. And truly, as you know, COVID came on, and it was unprecedented, and so social, emotional learning moved to the forefront. And I just do want people to recognize that we have been doing this work for many, many years, for decades, actually, but it was very important that it moved to the forefront. But there's a couple things that we needed to figure out, the how, the what, and the why. And how are we going to do this in a systemic way to get feedback in districts? And the first thing that we did was do a state scan, and we really looked at what, the questions were really around, what are you doing, what's happening in your schools, what do you need more support on? We got sixty-two percent of districts who are in the middle of a pandemic. And once we got those responses, there were some key things that actually were highlighted. One was they wanted more curricula. Two, they wanted an extension of the K to two habits, I'm sorry, K to three habits to four to twelve, so they wanted that continuum. And then the other was more support for what we call tier ones, which is universal, meaning all students get it, some type of support, some type of strategy, so that they can better identify what targeted supports they needed and what intensive supports they needed. So those were the things that we got as far as feedback. In addition to that, we really got, we found out that addition for doing some incredible work around SBL. So this was not something where they were trying to do a quick fix, they were really responsible, it was part of the strategic operating plan, and they were really working hard to do this. So that was how we found out the information. And then the next question was the what. How are we going to support our district, so that we're very coherent, concise about how we do that? And, and so one of the things that we wanted to make sure we had was this document. So that's what makes us here today. And this document really outlines some incredible things for students to learn. And this is about connection. This is more than, you know, is college and career ready, but we also want to have that interaction between student, student, adult and student, and adult and adult. So we're looking at it from a holistic perspective around SBL. And these simple things, remember those things called soft skills that we use for going to work, and, you know, being able to communicate effectively, being able to get to work on time, all those little things like that that are so important, but we take for granted? And also, we, we help students understand that this is not based on in any way a deficit model, this is based on a strength-based approach. So how do we get better? How do we grow? And that's really what this document is about. And the last thing that I'm going to say before I turn it over is that we went through a grueling, rigorous process, this was not an easy task. Joanne and I researched thirty different states, because we wanted to know what we've learned, we wanted to know what was best practice, so we did a lot of our own conversations on the phone with other states to find out how they did it, what worked, what didn't work. And then after that, we came up with a plan of how we were going to like develop this document, and then the next thing that we did was we decided to have a work group. And that work group was external folks. So we wanted to get feedback from other people to let us know what we need, so districts, other organizations, higher education, and so this work would really help us draft this beautiful document. And then the last part of that is then we have to vet it. We have to get it out to the community and see what they thought, and get their feedback and be able to, be able to make the necessary changes. So that included families, that included students, that included our educational organizations in the field, administrators for unions. So we really did a, I would say, an in-depth look and research around this, so that this could actually be the document that is before you today. And I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Good afternoon, everyone, Madam Chair, Commissioner. So what I'd like to do, get ready before I pass it over to Chief Officer Irene Perisi, Chief Academic Officer, who's my supervisor, Irene Perisi, is work to situate this habit document in the realm of academics. So often, when we talk about SEL and supporting students in their journey in developing social, emotional learning, so, so often, the first response is, we have one more thing that we have to do with our students or for our students, one more thing we have to add on to all of our other responsibilities. And our point here is that the habit can and should be embedded in academic instruction, right? And so that's our goal here. So all of the areas, and I know that you've had a chance to peruse the document, all of the areas, each area of development is further delineated in order to help educators understand the learning progression, as well as what are the individual habits. So essentially, in general, the document helps to unpack social, emotional learning and intellectual habits. So in other words, when you hear about students being motivated or not being motivated, it's helping educators understand which of these indicators, behaviors, understandings, ways of being contribute to someone, to children being motivated. What does that mean within the context of academic learning? What does it mean to be self-aware, right? And so this document, I think, offers, I know, offers very specific language that delineates behaviors as well as unpacks for educators what we mean by working memory and cognition, and how that contributes to learning, again, in support of students becoming college and career-ready. And although the document that you have in front of you is not the final version, because we have a wonderful graphic artist who makes work dramatic and everything appears beautiful, within the document, you'll notice that there are dotted lines between the grade bands, and the dotted lines between the grade bands really helps us understand that children develop on a continuum. We're not saying that by four, three, students will be self-aware, and that's the end of it, right? So they're growing along a continuum where the skills become more sophisticated, and we know that children progress at different rates in their journey of learning, and so that's the point of this document. There are seven areas of development, just quickly, I'll let you know, developing positive skills, develop a positive self-concept, develop logic and reasoning, the fourth area is based on models, modes, excuse me, symbolic representation, positive attitude toward learning is one, and then the last two, positive interpersonal skills, and then identifying and understanding emotions of self and other. And so within those seven areas, we have delineated all of the underlying behaviors and understandings, so that educators can think about how, within the academic setting, they can support students in the development of the habits, if we're calling them. Any questions about the document? I know you've had it for some time, you've had time to peruse it. There's a lot to take in there, but I think in the interest of time, if that's, I'm sorry, were there any questions? I should ask you any questions? Okay, thank you. And so in the interest of time, I will pass these over to Irene Perisi, just to sort of sum up the purpose of our work and how we're supporting it.
Thank you, Joanna, thank you to the team. This, this is the work of a classroom teacher, that they have to pay attention to the memory of the first entry point in planning what the academic experience is going to be for students. And I'm just going to look at the very first area of development, executive functioning. That is one of the key areas that we've heard over and over again from our teacher colleagues about what, what the gaps were and what we've got from the pandemic, how do I validate my executive functioning skills? So I wish that we had this as a document, but we were building off of the K three document. And as we continue along with this continuum, as Joanne said, if you look at these, these indicators, it helps craft that lesson, that learning experience, because that's, those are the skills students need to bring to the table in order to grapple with context. So if I'm looking at middle school, where they have to be flexible and adaptable and move their thinking, that's important as you're working with your peers this year, to understand their thinking and be flexible to refine your own thinking, so that you can come to a solution and help problem solve. That's just one small way that this applies to the academic and as a practitioner, as I'm planning that learning experience, and there are many more. And what I appreciate is that this also acts as a tool for a teacher to say, I'm not seeing this level of skill. this level of skill as at its age range. So if, if you, if you're in middle school and I'm not seeing them, okay, let me look at these late elementary and see how do I build, how do I help build the skills that they can be successful in that area. So I think this is, um, a tremendous resource now that we have the potential to have a K10 continuum for our teacher colleagues that, um, I think we're equipping teachers with any greater asset to be able to set those learning targets down to academics, but also in that SEL world.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us. Um, what your last thing was aligned with what I was wondering about, thinking about this in the toolbox for, for an educator. Are there, is there, um, associated with this then some tips to help support if they identify an area that where the youngster should be and they're not? Is there some guidance that goes along with that too to help, how to help tackle that, booster that?
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, part of the grading body work that has yet to be developed will be guidance documents. Actually, we, we do have some draft documents already on the docket, and so we're going to continue to develop additional documents. And really it's being responsive to the field in terms of what it is they would like. So districts are, there are some that are actually using SEL programs. But what we're saying is, and Irene Perisi said it very well, is integrating the instruction or embedding within, uh, the academic areas. And so the guidance documents will help delineate, define, um, the indicator, how, how, for example, executive functioning contributes to reading comprehension, how would it determine how our children comprehend the text that they're reading, it's understanding what your working memory plays in that. Uh, and also, um, then helps to find other instructional areas, actually. Um, there is a sample lesson, uh, as well as, um, inflammatory material so that teachers can then take the information in their teams, their grade level teams as they're developing lessons and incorporate this information. So that's the idea. Thank you.
I just want to add, um, to what she said is that there's two other areas as well. Leadership, because we know that, uh, if this is going to work, we need to get leadership on board. And so there is going to be guidance for leadership as well, uh, that means central office and for school. And then the second piece is family. And so we will have, um, guidance on that, um, to support families so that they can understand that true line between home and school.
Yes. So I, I, again, I just want to really thank you for coming forward with this, this next iteration of where we're going. Uh, I do a lot of work with young people out of school and, and even though we're not inside of a school when we're doing 4H and, and some of these other, uh, leadership development programs, we use your resources. So the fact that, the fact that this is going to be coming forward as, as opportunities for, for not just teachers, but other practitioners, uh, really appreciate the work you've done.
Thanks for sharing that with us. It's good to know that other practitioners will be using this material. We'll keep that in mind.
Yep.
Development.
Thank you for the development.
Thank you. All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Um, so we have a motion in front of us to adopt the components of social, emotional, and intellectual habits, grade four through twelve. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Wonderful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Chair, I just do want to say that team, they've given this in the midst of a lot of all the students that's on their plate, but this is critical enough and it really shows the cross-agent of collaboration, the academic office, student support kind of working together, which is also modeling what we're expecting our districts to be doing as well. So, thank you.
Um, I did want to, um, take a moment to, to thank, um, everybody for our marathon session to get to, get to our break at lunchtime. Um, thank you, Commissioner, and the, the team and all of that. Um, and, and to thank Mike also for his ability to roll with us and draft things on the fly. All right. So I'm going to take a stab now. I am not going to walk you through a report of the chair, um, in the interest of time. Just suffice to say that, um, it's been lovely to be invited to a few things with the Commissioner since we last met, including a visit to Common Ground to see in action some of the Voices for Change, um, projects. Um, and I know there, I think there's some other opportunities, so I encourage you if it's near you and you can stop in, um, and be a part of it, it's really wonderful to see what the young people have done to see it in action. Um, and then just as fast, we had an opportunity to, um, was invited by the Commissioner, Lieutenant Governor, to sit on a panel, um, in the Women and Girls Leadership Series that really focused on, uh, within Black History Month, the focus was on the rollout of Black and, um, and Puerto Rican and Montino history curriculum. So really wonderful. Uh, our Commissioner will probably talk more about it, but just wanted to just mention those two things. I'm going to turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you. And I'm also sensitive of time. I will be short. Going to have Brian to, uh, come to, uh, the table just to talk to us. You have my report in your package, so you can peruse that. The one thing I'll just take on that, that I last month testified at the Executive Legislative Nominations Committee, um, meeting, voted out favorable out of the committee, and now sits on the Senate floor for those to take action when they come back in, but I appreciate it. I know Vice Chair Ben is not here, but she actually came, uh, and was sitting in the gal hall, uh, and will wait, uh, for that and keep moving forward. One of the things you did ask about at the last meeting, we had some testimony about CTSET, uh, the, uh, connect, the Special Education Data System. And you had asked specifically again to talk to Mr. Brian, who is back, uh, with PCG. And so, uh, Brian, uh, Brian, I think Rick is going to just roll us through some updates with the data, and then we can answer any questions. Uh, and you might have also seen an article in the paper on CTSET, so this gives us an opportunity to have some more conversation with Brian. And I just want to say, I thank you, Brian. Uh, it's been, it's been a lot, uh, that's going through, and Brian is making the rounds in meeting where educators, uh, when, at the last meeting when educators were here, Brian met with them right after that. So go ahead and provide us your update, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair, Board members, great to be here again. Uh, so I'm here with Jim McGlin from Public Consulting Group. I'm going to do a few highlights for you all, and, um, and we're happy to answer any questions. And then Jim's going to go through a few of the slides, we're talking a little bit more depth about additional training and technical assistance, as well as some updated data from our last meeting. Commissioner, as you mentioned, we've really been attuned to the feedback around this system in general. And I just wanted to take a moment to really acknowledge the work that the districts are doing. They're doing a phenomenal job with the tasks that they have in learning a new system, learning a new IEP document, and rolling that out. Um, I had a personal experience with this at the local level, and it's really a three-year process for folks to be able to, um, you know, to be able to adapt and to fully operationalize with districts. So I, I'd always like to point it out to give, you know, for folks to give themselves grace and time as that learning process and change process happens throughout the state. And, um, I mentioned our districts are doing very well. We're, right now, we're in the process of, um, a data collection that's called child count. So we look at special education prevalence rates across the state. It's a three-step process, and we've heard really positive feedback from our districts on the, uh, the process this year. There are eighty-seven thousand plus records that are clean in the system as a data term, meaning the students are there, we know they're there, and they have the right and accurate information in that. Um, there, we're working through districts to be able to identify a very small percentage of students. Um, and so that process is moving forward very smoothly. Even saying that, districts are still navigating between two different systems for that because of the use and the, um, transition, this is a transition year, so they're looking into systems for this process. So next year, we do expect this to be even, um, even smoother process for that data collection. Um, it's a very comparable tool, and things are going well in that sense. One thing to note, though, is the indication across the state. Our early indications are that our identification rates are increasing again over last year, um, creating, you know, um, additional responsibilities for our special education teachers and case managers. And I believe we talked about the importance of the work that the special educators are doing and the amount of students that are, they're supporting within schools and that it's not their sole responsibility, um, that it is really a collaborative process between general education and special education. Another thing I wanted to mention very briefly is our state accommodation synchronization that's happening. So there is a nightly feed from CTSET, so four IEPs that are finalized in the new system. When teams get together and recommend state accommodations for students, those are automatically syncing into the TIE system, which is a different system for our state testing. And so that's really an efficient way. Previously, districts would have to manually enter that information from their system into TIE. Now this year, they're doing both, right? Because not all students have IEPs in the system. So, um, that is another ultimate goal and realization that will really come to fruition in year two. Uh, but I know both teams have worked hard to ensure that that synchronization happens and those efficiencies are moving forward. And to the Commissioner's point, I wanted to mention, we are engaged in a special education teacher listening tour. So we have six sessions across the state that will be scheduled in March. Uh, we are working closely with the CEA and, um, and AFT and the union teachers unions, mostly for communicating that out to teachers and making sure that they're aware. We're going to do some, in, some virtual sessions as well. And we're, the, the goal is really a tribal goal. One is to talk about their feedback with the system and where they see potential enhancements and improvements that we could put in place. Two, to talk about the responsibilities and their current conditions, um, to make sure that they're heard and we acknowledge the work that's being done, and to, uh, ensure that our support, the Bureau of Special Education is responsive to those current needs. And then the, the third aspect of this training is really around, um, you know, the overall state of affairs with special education and being able to document those concerns. And we have a community of practice in place for special education teachers. The challenge is time. Folks don't have time to, they're with students during the day and, um, there's responsibilities afterwards. So we're trying to find the best mechanisms in place to be able to provide those communities for, um, teachers to work not only within their buildings, but across districts as well. So, um, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk in a little bit about, um, training, a new enhancement within the system that we've spoken about called CTSET Search, as well as some updated data.
Thanks, Brian. And I appreciate the, the visit I've had in full transparency. I live in Jersey, and we had a flinty glance of snow, so I initially took a picture of my snowball in my hair this morning, showed my kid is wearing out of school over by my hotel. But it was interesting to see the white stuff. There is none of it where I come from, which is very strange having grown up with lizards and school days off, et cetera. But, um, happy to be here today. Um, you know, we, we've been working very closely, as I think all of you are aware, and sort of multiple levels and fronts here. I think, you know, what's not necessarily addressed in the slides that we're going to talk through is some of the support that we're providing to districts. You're going to see in some of the data later that we're still seeing an acceleration of the usage of the system, folks are creating combined documents within it. Uh, more and more users, and we added eight thousand users in the last month who logged in for the first time. We still have an enhanced sort of team. You know, we're, we're sort of staffing up to, to sort of deal with the initial implementation as we're rolling out changes to the system and tweaks to the system based on the feedback. We want to make sure that we have that sound, the average response time is just about five hours. Our goal is within one business day, so we're within those SLAs, we're still doing that. But we are still, it's just seeing a pretty good, you know, uptake of volume as you'd expect in the first year of implementation. What's also interesting is when you look at the data around support, the top twenty districts who are submitting inquiries and support requests make up over forty percent of the volume. And then when you drill into that even more, when you look at the top ten individuals who are submitting tickets, they're actually the fifteen percent. It's actually thirteen percent. So what we're trying to do is target some of the training and support, doing direct outreach to some of those LEAs and those individuals. What we're seeing is each month, those top groups are not the same group. So what, what we're feeling from that is by providing that targeted report, the support based on data, addressing folks' needs and misconceptions, we're not seeing them coming back for additional support. So we're continually building sort of that awareness, that visibility, that understanding in the field. On the slide in front of you, and I think Brian may have spoken to this last month when I was in here. Um, you know, we, we've had, we have an enhanced training proposal that we sort of put forward, and we're, we're sort of moving on now. It includes seventy-five webinars, uh, that we're scheduling and conducting across the state across a variety of topics. Twenty-five in-person sessions where we'll actually go out to an LEA site and work with the district and the community districts around that on some very specific targeted issues that we work with the department and the users, and the users to define. And then we're also producing twenty different five-minute sort of quick videos to help people, because we understand, you know, those in-person live sessions are things that people can't always make. We record them, we make them available, but those sort of quick, uh, opportunities to get access to information is a big thing. Um, and we're, we're making that readily available. Um, on the next slide, you know, I wanted to highlight, and I, I think the Commissioner would want to thank for this one. The, the phrase one-stop shop for support is something that Brian brought to us a couple of months ago as a desire for the department. Um, you know, the CTSET system has a support page of documents and resources. What's different about this new enhancement, which we're calling CTSET Search, is it works almost like a search engine, like Google. Similarly, when you're in the system, you click on a button, it launches the page, it looks exactly like what you see on the right of that slide, and you can just type in what's your inquiry, what's your topic. And then what you'll see is actually a list, similar to when you type something in Google, a bunch of links to articles about that specific topic, videos, like those twenty-minute interstitials that sort of give you a high-level view, and additional resources like workflow documents and other things. Um, we're going to be deploying that later this month. We're in the process right now of just finalizing curation, just making sure that content is correct. And then when we get the kid to figure the system into action, um, you know, we're excited about it. We do think that it'll provide a quick and easy and additional way for folks to get help as they need it, when they need it. The next slide gets a little bit into the data. You know, what I've been trying to do is sort of, you know, since October, um, you know, when Brian reached out to us and we sort of escalated, you know, our response to some of these things, what we did was we sort of snapped the line in terms of usage and the actual production of materials within the system. And then I noted earlier, you know, we've seen an uptick, I think last month when Brian reported out, we're around thirty-nine thousand, uh, folks who've actually accessed the system. We're now up to forty-seven thousand. So just in the month of February alone, we've seen that uptick of eight thousand. When you look at the unique number of LEAs who respectively created an IEP or a 504, we've actually seen very little change there. We've actually only seen it go up once on the 504 point. Um, you know, I think we, we've reached a point of almost saturation now. The LEA is actually getting in there and using the system, which is good. But now we're seeing more and more individuals from within the LEA from doing it. And that makes sense, you know, that the fact that we're seeing, you know, special education is a collaborative process. There are many people within the LEA who play a role in it. So to see more and more people actually getting into the system, collaborating on the creation of these plans, that's, that's in tune with sort of what we'd expect. Um, the other piece here that, that we're seeing is that continual growth in the number of finalized IEPs that are in the system. And we're now approaching fifty-two thousand on that threshold. Uh, but those statistics there are sort of presented in a different way on the next slide. I don't know if we can go to that. But that, I think in a more visual way, it sort of gives you sort of the trajectory that we're on right now. The top set of data bars tell you where we are as of yesterday. It's the same data that we present on that chart, but it's a little bit easier to see. You know, that, that total number of the finalized IEP documents to date in blue is steadily on the rise after that pretty massive spike that we saw from the fall into the early winter. Um, you know, we're, we're going to continue to work to, I think, another, you know, piece of information I think is good, is that we get the system out there, we have different user types. There are over twenty different types of users and pathways that people could take through the system. As we get feedback from the groups on how we can make that more efficient, you know, more intuitive, we're making enhancements to the system to make it easier to navigate. There is more rigor in this system. There's no way to avoid it. But we've gotten to a point now when we have folks who actually become accustomed to the system, they're familiar with the work and the process flows, they're creating an IEP in about forty to forty-five minutes. And that's on form. Um, so, you know, we're, we're seeing that, we feel good about that, but the changes that we've made to sort of, you know, make it a little bit easier and simpler, we pushed out in the last month, it was twenty-seven enhancements or bugfish fixes in the last month alone. We're going to continue to do that. The listening tour that Brian's on, I think is going to bring us some really good feedback around how we can further refine the system. But, um, I think I'll, I'll wrap there if there are any questions.
Any questions? Yes. What is being done to address the structural issue of being nonviolent, fighting the new system? by the use of stuff that's been in the press?
Thank you for that question. So when we say noncompliant, we want to be very specific about that. So there are several regulations in the state and then also IDA regulations. We have an awesome responsibility at the state and at the local level to maintain compliance. I think most of what we've heard around compliance has been getting the IEP into the parent's hands within ten days of the meeting notice. So school districts have been really communicating upfront with parents, depending on where they are in that journey. As Jen mentioned, we're trying to differentiate the support because schools and districts and even individuals within those schools are at different levels of engagement with the system. And the parents have been understanding that folks are learning the new system and process. We have internal mechanisms in the system that are visual in the system for compliance to assist districts in this first year of implementation. But we've been very clear with districts to say, if there's a system functionality that results in a delay in any timelines, that districts won't be holding individually accountable for that. What they would do if there was a complaint from a parent, they would submit their Help Us ticket and say this was something that was out of our control. In the previous facility, we had noncompliance in that area. Districts do their best as a state, as a whole. We do a very great job with compliance when we talk about indicators, annual reviews being held. So we have a process, before we hold folks accountable, we need to make sure they have support to do the work that they need to do. It can't be an unrealistic expectation. So when we hear that, we try to find out exactly which part of the compliance piece is missing for them, and then helping them to document those concerns. And I know we've put a process in place where if there's a delay in finalization for some reason that's maybe out of their control, whether it's a training issue or a system issue, it's the system that's causing that, it's not someone's lack of or confidence. So we've taken responsibility for that and tried to work through that with districts.
I have to understand, another point of complaint was that more than what people need to, one person needs to work on an account when they're locked out. It's more repurposed, the order of a reality in a school building, you have multiple people who may need to sign off or add input. Is that a functionality that's being worked on?
I'm not sure exactly. You're talking about multiple users in one system.
For a, I got that as a individual student.
Oh, right, in the same area.
Yeah, for one student, right?
Yeah, yeah. There was a functionality that was added, I want to say probably at some point in the fall, where users will know if someone else is in that system. It doesn't lock them out necessarily, but it provides a warning, because in this system, it's not a form-based system, it's a workspace area. So you could go in and work on, I'm just using it as an example, private levels of performance for a student. And if two people work on that at the same time, there's a warning that, you know, Brian in this section, you know, whoever saves first will win, essentially, because you can't have two people working in the same place at the same time.
But we know that there are various aspects of that process. You could actually have different folks working on different parts of that process at the same time.
Yeah.
So that control is in there, honestly, to preserve and make folks aware of the fact that you might be overriding or underwriting what your colleague's doing. It's more about communication, but outside of the process, as people work.
Is that something you guys threw in the training?
Yes, yes.
I mean, clearly, that seems like a risk of disaster. Two people need to do their job and cancel each other out.
Yeah, the previous system actually locks you out.
Right.
So the previous system, when you go in and work in a system, it will say, you can't enter this because so-and-so is there. This system gives you a warning and says someone is in the system, you know, and I think the warning says, you know, that you can contact and see who that person is to make sure that you're working not at the same time.
One of the fundamental differences of the product is that it's meant to improve the collaboration and communication with folks. So it's in very limited situations that you're describing where people are actually in the same exact field that they're trying to populate, whereas there's a lot of other work where people can actually, instead of being locked out of the system for the duration, do their part in terms of logging some observations or elements of evaluation. But you don't want people trying to create the same goal at the same time without being aware that the other person's there. We retrace that in the fall. And it is something that we highlight during the office hours and the trainings that we do.
Brian, I'd like to add as well, for those who might have read the article, that there are a lot of things in that article that were already fixed, but not necessarily addressed in that article. But something that came to the board was five minutes and you were timed out of the system. Could you just make, correct that here so people know what's going on?
Yeah, I think that was a miscommunication in terms of how people were interpreting things. I think that the system was configured in a way that's a thirty-minute timeout, but after twenty-five minutes, there's a pop-up that says, you know, "Warning, you're going to be locked out due to an activity in five minutes." So it's not a five-minute timer, it's a thirty-minute, and if that's variable, we can change that. But we had some pretty varied conversations around that on the front end. We thought for security purposes, you know, thirty minutes was practical and right. A practitioner might need to walk away from the screen for a few minutes to address a child, not have to log back in. But I think just to say, and I listened to the board meeting last time after hearing that, but that's what we traced that back to. And I think Brian's had a chance to validate that with the individual who cited that.
So the important pieces, though, that we really do want to hear from the Listening Tour, or whether it's providing verification, taking that feedback, and making enhancements, adjusting our training, because it really is a differentiated approach, and we don't want to respond to, you know, a statement that is broad. We want to really specific, like what section of the program are you in, which specific students, we're able to really target the response that we're providing to individuals. But I want to say again, our districts are doing an amazing job. I've spoke to directors and have heard from them about the internal structures that they're putting in place in their districts. So and our CTSETs with the Commissioner's support, our CTSET implementation guidance have been appreciated and have helped with some of those structures in districts.
The numbers definitely show the progress that's happening here. I know I certainly appreciate you coming and keeping us updated on it, because it is always a challenge to implement a new system. And I know I go into expecting some bumps along the road, but we were certainly hearing at the board about those bumps. So I certainly appreciate the regular updates on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's the, I know you're just about there, board members. I did one, and a shout-out, if you can take a look at those, we're really pleased that you have pictures. But I didn't want John just to talk about this one, because I don't think we've talked about it, the board needed, and I wanted you to learn more about Vision to Learn and what's going on in the space.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, the Vision to Learn program was, is a program in which they, you can see their bus there, they bring their bus to different schools, and they provide vision exams for free. And if the students need glasses, they actually get them, they get them their glasses. They have an optometrist right in the van, and they write the prescription and some kind of, and they usually come back in a couple of weeks and give the glasses to the kid. I have to give a shout-out to Irene Parisi, assisted in setting up this, the first program in East Hartford. There's nineteen sites now in Connecticut, and a number of them in schools in four different counties. Those pictures that you see at the top are actually the actual pictures from Vision to Learn Annual Report, and those are from the East Hartford, Silver Lake, East Hartford Schools. So that's pretty cool. There are some opportunities. They're doing these events periodically, and I'd love to keep the board informed when those are happening, and just to be in the room when those kids get those glasses on. It's pretty amazing. I mean, kids, like, they just light up like they're seeing the world for the first time. One of my favorite quotes is, "Renee, a point here, because we work it easier, I get it done faster." Before, I would wonder if the number was a three or a five, and then have to ask my parents, and now I can just get it done. So it's a super cool program. There are a lot of, Valium Foundation and other philanthropies in partnership with us and the University of Connecticut, so.
But thank you, John, because when we talk about learning and removing barriers to success in learning, it's also physical health, right? So it is, right? So they can do their work, and some other things that say when we talk about, you know, toothpaste and all those kinds of things that impact learning that folks don't often think about. But when we talk about educating the whole child, that truly is a part of it. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you, John, and the other pictures you can look at. I'd appreciate, but I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, thank you all. And it's also good work. I hate to shortchange the debate, but we do need to move along, but thank you. No financial matters, and I'm aware of that item, so we'll move to number nine, Consent Agenda. There are four items on there. The chair will indicate a motion. I'm sorry, does anyone wish to remove anything from consent? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second moved in properly. Second is thank you. In front of us are the four items on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Commitment report, academic standards and assessment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will be meeting on March twentieth. I believe at three thirty to begin.
Great, thank you. Our vice chair is traveling and not here for the accountability and support.
However.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, she, she texted me some notes.
Okay, I was going to see who from the committee wanted to report, because we had a very interesting meeting.
Accountability and Support met, I want to say, two weeks ago, or last, time is getting by me now. We met with the team from New Haven to include the superintendent and her inner circle. We talked about alliance goals update, literacy, math, and absenteeism were covered. Committee showed the urgency for improvement in all areas, especially in attendance. And Accountability and Support will meet again on April nineteenth. That's a report coming from Accountability and Support.
I have to note, there's been so much focus on that district, and it's coming in front of us, and there was a lot to be said about the presentation that we heard. But I did want to highlight, I actually was impressed with the math presentation, and it left with a bit of hope that it was some appropriate focus on math, and the lead person there really talked about how they are integrating math into every aspect of curriculum and sending out to every classroom teacher, something to incorporate in the morning meeting, from the little ones on, math facts that they can integrate. So there was a glimmer of hope in the presentation, of something for us to keep an eye on. So let's keep watching that. Finally, it done?
Yeah, we did not meet this past month, but having said that, Nora Chapman, our audit chair, continues to keep our committee informed regarding any issues that are coming up or problems that occur, you know, ongoing. And I think we are planning to meet in March, would basically meet quarterly anyway, so I think it's coming up.
Chair, I'd just like to add a physician's vote.
Yeah, that's good. So Nora can get to bed.
Legislative and policy.
Thank you. Legislative and policy committee met this morning, and we're seen so long ago.
Yeah.
So it was a short minute this week. We just had an overview or sort of a reminder from John about the firearm safety guide that the board had approved back in fall of 2020. And because the Connecticut against gun violence advocacy group voiced some concerns, so we're going to invite them to talk to us at the next meeting. We were hoping that Bally would be able to provide their presentation that we heard at the previous meeting. We're hoping that they would be able to do that now. But our chair was very wise and suggested we move that to our next meeting in the interest of time. So that's all.
Yeah, I want you to be able to have full attention to the presentation, and at this point, I think we would have to have that. CTEC, anything to update?
Well, in CTEC's role, the electric soul recently hired nineteen wind and test seniors in a variety of trade offerings, including sheet metal, house sitting, and seating and more. This can accomplish it for CTEC as well as for Winter Fair. The CTEC advisor board has announced their intent to begin the search for the new superintendent. A floor search committee of the board will begin meeting later this month to finalize the job description and other posting information, as well as develop candidate interview questions. CTEC continues to hold productive conversations in partnership with the president of the Connecticut Community College System. Preliminary concepts include the development of an education extension opportunity for CTEC grads, as well as preliminary trade offering, including IT and health stuff. The spot committees will meet the sixth and seventh this month, and the full board will meet on the fifteenth.
Thank you. Any questions? Masby.
Yes, I understand that Mr. Harrison is going to serve again this year on the Public Education Position Committee. Congratulations on that. And I understand, I believe Mr. Taylor is also serving on the program, Masby, but I can't remember what it is.
At the moment, I can't either.
All right. And the annual legislative conference is going to be held the week of the nineteenth of this month in Washington, so I'm planning to attend that in my capacity as a member of the Masby Board. And Secretary Cardona is going to speak at that conference, so that would be wonderful to connect with him again. Here is words of wisdom.
Conference Planning Committee.
Oh, very good, okay.
Can I please? Yes. In exactly an hour, I will be presenting to CDC Dash, along with two others, two board members, one from Kentucky and one from Louisiana. And we will be presenting our work thus far as part of Masby's engagement cooperative with their students.
That we will be blessed to hear that day. Yeah, another reason we have to get you out of here. So, Sir, was that written?
Yeah.
It's in the supplemental. We have that. Anything to say on that?
None of the sir's.
Okay, you.
But just one, Maxie and Ojai, so here, you've all paid attention to the free meal conversation. Free meals we started today, so just wanted you to know that that's happening in schools across the state as well. But I know you want to know that.
That's all, that's all we've been working on that stuff. All right, now, item eleven here, what else do I discuss? Item for discussion, I think there's nothing. I think we're good. We are up to adjournment at three twenty-eight. Your motion?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all, thank you all.
I see somebody opposed, thank you.